They're two different Molly, they're two different ones.
It was fun, had a good time.
Yes, so you look at them.
And I didn't get hurt, that's the best part.
One in. Didn't know if you put them both in more doctor.
Fifty-five and older soccer league.
I've got it.
Okay.
And uh.
Oh, I've gotten around to it.
It was, most of, most of the guys were former coaches, even professionals. See that they mind wanting to do something but the body said, I don't think so.
Yeah. Yeah.
They'd get, they'd get really frustrated.
Where's that? Hilton head? Okay, yeah, alright. Yep. David's up.
And you, you can pop it.
Yeah.
He's little. He's in a car seat, five point. That jazz, yeah. Um, he's four, but he's. Well, this one's almost not tall. Other. Five. Michael was like, as we did, as they did. Falls in second. Party, we're out of six stops, there was like. Once car three. It won't be. I'm still finding pacifiers in my. I think I need to. The first few days. So I have a lot of update on that.
Hi Mel. Sorry about the other thing.
Alright, end of the day.
Marginally.
Margin. That's the.
How are you?
Good.
Yeah. Very apologetic. Well, hey.
Oh.
First, look at the stuff.
In our hand.
Good luck. I was. See, but they added stuff. Mean today. Some of it, well.
This being, policy manual being presented for.
Robyn.
You have to go, uh, policy by policy.
Yeah, I know, I'm saying we did.
Also noted.
Um.
Please. Okay, thank you. All of it, huh? All of them. On it.
No.
Can you hear me? Okay. Good morning, um, everyone, before we begin today, I wanted to just take an opportunity, uh, and, and provide an update regarding our school district and the preparedness measures, uh, regarding coronavirus. Okay, so, uh, let me first begin by stressing that as of this morning, uh, South Carolina has reported no cases of coronavirus. However, it is important that we are prepared. So, we have been in contact with DHEC, they're in constant contact with CDC, have also contacted our local, local emergency management, who are also in contact with DHEC monitoring closely, and they get regular updates. We are currently following and will continue to follow the recommendations and the guidance of DHEC. Our schools and classrooms are cleaned every day by the district's private sector contractor, custodians use a hospital-grade disinfectant on desks, work surfaces, doorknobs, water fountains, et cetera. Through thorough hand washing is an important part of preventing the spread of contagious illnesses, and our district's school nurses teach proper hand washing techniques to students. Held a conference call yesterday with our principals, directing them to review our school district's emergency management plan carefully, and we discussed how academic instruction could continue if, uh, there was an event of an outbreak that resulted in the culture, in the closure of schools. We have created a webpage that's dedicated to coronavirus preparedness and has links to DHEC and the CDC as well on there, to make sure that we're keeping everybody informed. As you know, this is flu season, and the flu season, and the flu has been a much larger, uh, issue, uh, uh, you know, uh, here in, certainly in, in the United States and South Carolina. We will continue to monitor the situation carefully, and we follow the recommendations and guidance of DHEC along the way. Thank you.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Beaufort County Board of Education Board Work Session, February twenty eighth, to order. First, I would like, uh, an approval of the agenda, please. Um, moved by Dr. Wisneski, seconded by Mel Campbell. Take a vote on the agenda, all in favor, please raise your hand.
No discussion?
Oh, sure, discussion? Sorry.
Uh, I just want to state for the record, I'll be voting no on this agenda. This agenda was known to the leadership well in advance of this meeting, and the, uh, amount of time that we're not given to examine the agenda and do our own deliberations, uh, leads me to believe that, uh, the leadership either feels that we don't want advanced notice, or need advanced notice, or even deserve advanced notice. So I think they can do much better in delivering an agenda draft to us, well in advance of the meeting, with the documents, well in advance of the meeting, so that we can take our time and come to thoughtful conclusions with thoughtful questions to ask during the discussion.
Anyone else? Okay, at this time, um, I'd like to take a vote, all in favor of the agenda, please raise your hand. Mr. Smith?
I want to stay.
Okay. The, uh, agenda is approved, we have one abstention, um, one no. That means eight. Eight, one, one, and Dr. Guads is absent today. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. You see that, um, the media has been properly notified. At this time, are there any public comments? No public. Right, so we will move right into the, um, budget update. We're a little bit ahead of, there's.
Good morning. So, um, this morning, I, um, was pointed out that there was, there's one particular slide that, uh, some headings were cut off, so I have provided a revision to Robin this morning and to Molly. Uh, and I believe the one on the screen has the updated version, and I'll point out the specific, um, uh, revision when we get to that slide. It is the, actually on slide five, it's the heading, the headers there. So, um, so to get started this morning, uh, this is the budget calendar I presented, uh, about a month ago, and to provide kind of some guidance on what things we, where we've been, uh, where we're going, and what we're waiting on. So, right now, we're waiting on, uh, basically, um, the information from the State Department. State, whether it's a State Office of Revenue and Fiscal Affairs, the State Department of Education, uh, the legislature, and, uh, local tax, uh, information coming from the state as well. Uh, we're also working on still gathering the expenditures and compiling those into our munis database. So, uh, as you see, we've kind of provided some checks where we've, things that have been completed, and we have developed, um, the board has developed the budget goals, we've distributed the. we have developed, the board has developed the budget goals, we've distributed the non-salary allocations and received those back, thank you, from the schools. We have distributed the departmental budget packages and distributed, received those back from the schools. Provided a budget update to the board on January 21st. We had all of our staffing meetings, thirty-two plus meetings with our departments, excuse me, our principals. We have provided the, as I said, the school allocations came back on February 14th, and then we are continuing to wait on EFA and Tier Three preliminary revenue projections. We do have some preliminary numbers from EFA, so we can work with what we have there. We are specifically waiting on the millage rate cap from the State Department of Revenue and Fiscal Affairs. There are two components to that. It is the, the census information and the CPI increase, the Consumer Price Index increase for the district. There are two components to that calculation, and one of the census information is not yet in, in at this time. So, we do not have the millage cap information to be able to calculate the local tax revenues that we will predict for the following year. As well as that, there are calculations of the value of the mill that are being completed at this time by the county, and we will have an opportunity to have input in that calculation process in the next few weeks. I have actually a call scheduled with Jim Beckert, which I've been in constant conversation with, at least weekly, and, and with Alicia Holland in the finance office there at the county. So, I'm keeping those lines of communication very much open, so we get as many updates as possible and as often as we can. So, the departmental allocations came back in on Friday, the 21st, and, and then we are continuing to wait on that millage rate increase information from the Department of Revenue and Fiscal Affairs. So, before we can really talk about next year's budget, we need to know where we are this year, especially on tax revenues. So, on slide three, you'll see here, and this is actually very encouraging information, and I'm very happy to report, that our tax revenues are right on track with what we budgeted. So, there are no excessive increases or decreases expected this year, so that's, that's a change from last year. So, I'm very excited about that the projections are coming in right on the mark. So, as you see, on the first row is Janu- through January 31st. So, tax collections primarily come in in December and January. So, the information we get through January 31st, by this time in the year, we have received ninety-four percent of the tax revenues that were budgeted to the district, which are one hundred and forty-nine point seven million in, in this fiscal year. So, as you can see, in the far right-hand column, we've collected one hundred and forty point five million. So, we're right at about nine million short, which is the, which is what we'll expect to collect in February through June. So, as you can see, the collections are ninety-three point nine percent. Last year this time, we were at eighty-seven point one percent, and last year, as you recall, we had a nine point two million dollar shortfall. The prior year, we were at ninety-four point seven percent, and at that, the excess that year was about four million dollars collected, more than was budgeted. And then the prior year, we had collected about ninety-four point nine percent in 2016, seventeen. That, that year, we collected an excess of two point seven. So, when I'm comparing those percentages, we, we compare them back for ten, twenty years. We have these calculations, but you wouldn't be able to read them on the slide today, so we, we want to make sure you can see these, see the information well. So, this tells me that we are going to come probably in the one to three million dollar excess, one to two million dollar excess range for this calendar year, which is right where we want to be. We want, don't want to be short for any reason, but this is very encouraging news, and it does show that our projections were accurate, and we're going to be right on the mark. So, with that, we'll move on to the next slide. So, although it's very early still in the process for the state level, the House Ways and Means Committee has provided some projections. So, we go through several stages, as you all know, House Ways and Means projections, then the full House, then the Senate Finance Committee, then the full Senate, then back to the Conference Committee, and then to the Governor. So, we have several stages left to go, and so this is very early in one of the beginning stages of the process. But there are some priorities that have been set by the House Ways and Means in the House, and this is, these are a few of those priorities. So, teacher salary increase is one of the main, education is very high priority of the House this year, and they have put in a three thousand dollar increase, preliminary increase into the budget for teacher salaries. So, that cost to the district is about five point six, excuse me, seven million dollars with benefits, some of which is predicted to come back to the district in the form of state revenue. So, the salary amount, the increase would be covered by the State Department. It's uncertain at this time whether the full amount of the benefit costs would be following that. So, benefits for the school district on teachers are approximately forty percent of the salaries in total, when, including health insurance. But those, health insurance is already a part, so we, somewhere between thirty and forty percent benefits is what the cost would be to the district. So, we'll be monitoring that increase. It is a substantial increase, very healthy there, and we will, we're encouraged by the priority of teacher salary being one of the primary things on budget item this year. Base student cost. Base student cost is one of the components of our Education Finance Act funding, the state, primary state funding source for schools in South Carolina. Eleven dollar increase is proposed to get to a total of twenty-five hundred dollars per student. As you recall, Beaufort receives about twelve, I believe the latest was twelve percent of the base student cost is actually recovered in Beaufort County. One of, we have one of the lowest percentages in the state of base student costs. So, that percentage of that increase has an impact of about seventy-six thousand dollars in revenue for the district at this time. So, that, there was a survey came, that came out yesterday to see what the fiscal impact would be on districts to raise student cost, and we shared that information with the legislature. So, we're encouraged by the increase. Unfortunately for Beaufort, it, it has a, has a small impact for us. Employer share of retirement. There ha- at the PIBA, the Public Employees Benefit Association, that is responsible for the retirement for South Carolina employees, has provided a, an increase, gradual increase over the several years to reduce the unfunded liabilities at the state level. So, we knew early on that there would be a one percent increase in the match, the employer match, not the employee withholding. That would increase, now would total, the total match for the school district that would affect our budget, the, the increase would be one percent, it would be for a total of twenty-two point eight percent would be the percentage match that we have at this point. So, that is, I would expect that amount not to change, or that percentage not to change, so we're including that in our budget calculations this year. Also, bus driver salary infringed. There are conversations about a two percent increase for bus drivers. So, we'll incorporate those preliminary increases into our budget. As far as the revenues concerned, we are still getting information for what the dollars would be that will come with that, and if the school districts will have to contribute any portion of that increase to make that state mandate. State reading coaches, there are also discussion of additional salaries for state reading coaches. They would, my understanding from the information was that the increases would have to supplement those that are already on the district. So, if we already have state reading coaches, the salaries would have to increase beyond, it could not supplement, replace any portion of a match that we pay for the differential on their total salary. So, we'll be listening more into that to understand. I'll be getting a state revenue update next week as well from, at, at a, the State School Board Association, School Business Officials Association, and so we'll be listening in on that conversation. Four-year-old kindergarten, also a priority for this year. It would expand our 4K, it'd expand 4K in our schools, full-day programs, and there, there is some conversation, and again, the effects on us are still unclear at this time. And the state is planning to put money in the budget for school buses, and again, we'll have to continue to listen in on what the impact on Beaufort will be. So, this slide is the slide with the, so in Board Docs, the top, top level, the audited, budgeted, projected actual, and projected variance at the top are the headers that were missing on, in Board Docs, and so we'll get a revision into Board Docs. It's already there, and so that you can see the, those actuals to eliminate any confusion there. So, in the first column is, left-hand side is our audited actuals from the last year's June 30, 2019 financial statements, where we ended the year with a six million dollar use of fund balance, ending at thirty-three point five million dollars, and a fund balance of thirteen point two percent. That, that use of fund balance was due primarily to the tax shortfall of nine point two million during reassessment. So, the next column is your budgeted FY 2020 amounts, and your revenues of one forty-nine point seven million that we talked about just a moment ago, in tax revenue. Total revenues of two hundred and fifty-three million. The budget was expected to use a one million dollars of fund balance with, to bring our fund balance down to thirty-two point five million, or twelve point three percent. However, we do expect that we'll be in a more favorable, favorable position than a use of fund balance this year. So, as demonstrated in the far, in the third column from the left, is projected actuals. So, based on the tax collections I'm seeing so far, I believe that we'll be collecting one to two million. So, in this projection, I'm showing about one million, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand in excess of our budgeted revenues. Now, we still have a ways to go, so that, again, that's a projection, and, and the actuals will, will vary from that amount, but I do believe that there will be some excess. State revenues are predicted to come in above projections by about five hundred thousand dollars, based on what we're seeing now, the monthly allocations that we're seeing. Other local revenues are predicted to come in about fifty thousand less. I'm going back up of slot, row. Our P-card rebate that was put into the operations revenues of the school district this year came in about fifty thousand dollars less, due to the spending. It's variable based on your different, different items that you're spending, and we, the, the laptop refresh for students was a fewer dollars spent in that category this year. So, the rebate therefore, on those dollars, reduced the amount of rebate we saw in this fiscal year. So, federal revenues are coming on as, as expected, and other revenues are coming slightly less than expected for, but we do believe that one point seven million of revenues is where we'll end up, in excess of what we projected, which is a good position. Expenditures, although it's still early, we have done some projections on our, on our actual expenditures for this year. We do normally come in with a little bit of, a little bit of savings, so I am predicting about two and a half million of savings on the expenditure side, and that is something that we generally have each year, and it's generally due to vacancies and positions. So, overall, my ex, my projection is that we will come in about three million increase in the fund balance, bringing us to about thirty-six point seven million fund balance, and fourteen percent. So, it's sort of inching our way back to that fifteen to seventeen percent range that the board, the threshold or the target that the board set for ideal fund balance, and we'll able to, if we continue in this pattern, we'll able to, each year, hopefully, increase that incrementally to get back to the board's projected or target, target goal. So, the next steps for us are continuing to gather those projected local tax revenues. We're still working on the projected expenditure budgets, and loading all of that information into Munis. We'll be having some departmental budget reviews in the upcoming week, and each department, each chief officer, each senior staff member will be reporting out the information to the superintendent on our budgets, and providing information on what's included in each one. And so, we will be scouring through the details of the entire budget over the next two weeks to prepare to bring that back to the board toward the March 17th meeting. Establish meetings with County Council Finance Committee. We'll need to begin to discuss, have discussions about the assessed values, value of the mill, and those sorts of things with the County Council Finance Committee, and of course, we're going to stay tuned to legislative issues at the state level. So, I'm not going into an enormous amount of detail on the state legislative, legislative updates because you, Lynn Stokes Murray will be here today as your lobbyist, and will be discussing in more detail things that are going on, and she's much more, much closer to the legislature than I. So, we did have a conversation last week, which I did appreciate we were able to, she was able to update me on a few things, and I was able to ask a few questions and interested in some areas such as school security, what are you hearing on the school resource officer funding, and that sort of thing. So, it's a good conversation, and we've connected now and are able to, for the first time ever, had a conversation with our lobbyist. So, I think that's a great connection that I'm, I'm able to make and get constant updates on her, because she's right at the, at the lines and is able to hear things firsthand. So, that communication is really important for me. And so, we'll have another update on March 17th. We'll continue to bring more and have more information for you each time as we get through, as we move through the budget process, and then plan on April 7th for the preliminary total budget to come before the board. So, we'll, we're planning the public forums out in May as well to get input from the board, from the community before we move forward with a certification of the budget later in, in early May. So, with that, I'd be happy to take any questions you have.
I have a question for the superintendent. Thank you, Tanya. That was an excellent presentation.
Thank you.
My question doesn't have anything to do with hers, but it has the budget. Next steps, we've mentioned in conversation, all of us many times, over the past ten months, that we would be strictly viewing the budget in terms of what it, how it connects to student achievement, all fifty thousand line items. We're going to get our first look at a departmental budget on March 17th, and then we're going to get the total budget on April 7th, I believe. Is that enough time for us? We, we talked in terms of starting in August or October, and now we're, tomorrow is March, and we still have no idea of how the budget is going to connect to student achievement. Are you going to be able to fulfill our requirement to do that in the short amount of time that seems to be allocated for it?
My expectation is that the budget would be targeting student achievement, okay, and that the, the work of departments is going to be targeting student achievement. But the calendar that's laid out around it was a calendar that I believe the board approved through the process, for the process of the budget cycle.
Hearing that it's targeted for student achievement does not, I believe, achieve what the board wanted. We wanted documented and shown how the money is targeted towards student achievement. And so, what I'm asking is, is March 17th and April 7th enough time to be able to show that to us before we start the preliminary approval cycle? Don't forget that there's always the push to approve this budget in May.
Well, I will work with my team to make sure that we document the information regarding the budget.
Thank you.
Mr. Mel Campbell?
Salary increase, three thousand...
Microphone, please.
Insurance is kind of stable.
Yes.
But how does the benefit, how does the benefit affect, I mean, how does that benef- how does that three thousand dollar raise affect other benefit? how does that $3,000 raise affect other benefit issues and what are they?
So there are three types of benefits that are connected to a salary in our, in our budget. The social security Medicare match, which is a percentage of the salary. The South Carolina retirement, which is a percentage of the salary. And the health insurance, which is not connected as a percentage. It's a flat premium, premium amount. So those two items make up 2, 30% of the benefits costs. And the health insurance, we approximate to make up about 10% of the benefits on average. But they are not directly correlated to the salaries and benefits. So when we're looking at an increase in salary, we're only considering an increase in social security and Medicare and retirement match because the premiums won't correspondingly increase with that. If we're looking at a new position, we have to include the whole 40% because it's a brand-new position with health insurance. So for increase, we, we calculated a rate of about 30%.
So it is possible then that you can predict what, what that will cost?
Yes, we predict that the, um, the, so the step increase would be about 5.6, excuse me, the, the $3,000 increase would be about $6 million, 5.6 million dollars. And about 30% of that is going to be benefits, uh, in, in addition to that. Our step increase, mandatory step increase is about a million and a half on its own, so.
Is that going to be built into the budget to present or do we have to wait until the state?
Well, you've figured out our, our dilemma. So we're going to be doing several scenarios. I'm meeting regularly with my staff to do, we're going to put in a step increase and we're going to roll that in and then we're going to calculate what is $3,000 cost? What does a 2% increase, or every 1% for teachers and administrators and classified? And how much does a step cost? And how much is additional step cost? You know, so several scenarios that we'll be bringing forward. But I think that the best one to include in the budget as we move forward, if, unless the 3,000 changes, is to put that 3,000 in along with the mandated step and we'll begin the discussions that way. So I think that's, that's going to be our approach.
Any other questions? I have one then.
Sure.
Can you help me with the state reading coaches? So when we're given the position of a state reading coach, it's not fully funded, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So if there are new coaches, new coaching positions added, explain, you said something about we couldn't, um, just.
My understanding, okay, my understanding is there are pay increases for state reading coaches or additional allocations to the state, to the district. It's unclear yet whether or not there are new positions or, or they are pay increases for those individuals. But our state reading coaches are paid on the same salary schedule that all other reading coaches and literacy coaches throughout the district are. So if we're adding on to just those, that might provide some disparity with our existing coaches. So we're going to be learning more about that and asking those questions as we go forward. So it's, it's really clear, we want to be clear about what exactly their expectation is. So some of these come with some, a lot of contingents. Each one of these comes with contingencies. I believe, um, I can't recall which one. I believe it was the base student cost or one, one of the items required a, a policy of the, each school district to require that students did not, um, use their cell phones, basically their personal cell phones during instructional time of, the instructional day of the school district. So you have to then, there's, you know, all of these things have strings attached that come along and although that might, may already be, a policy may exist or, or we in the works, there are things that we have to do to, in order to accept some of these, this funding. So we'll be in tune. I'll, I'll bring back an update on that particular line item and as we move forward. So have it, as I have more information. We're doing a, fiscal impacts almost daily, sometimes twice a day to the State Department of Education. Every time a bill comes up, proposed, we are providing a fiscal impact on what that, how that will impact Beaufort County School District, so.
And I have another question if no one else has any. The base student cost, uh, the state is going to increase it by $11, so, meaning that, they're increasing the total student money that they're giving per student to $2,500.
That's correct.
However, Beaufort County does not get $2,500 per student. Is that correct?
That's correct. We will get a very small portion of that, yes.
And that's based on our poverty index? How, how is that determined?
It's based on the index of taxpaying ability. The amount of money that the Beaufort County has calculated based on assessed values of the county in order to be able to fund locally and support locally. So Beaufort is known as one of the wealthiest counties in the state. Therefore, our percentage of, of, that we receive of the base student cost is the lowest in the state.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Orshak?
Thank you, Tanya. So as we go forward and we have a variety of presentations through the budget cycle, what might be helpful is to have as the first page on our slide or on the opening page, the budget priorities that the board approved some time ago so that we, we know that as we're having these many discussions that we are aligning our board-approved priorities.
Yes, actually, we are, uh, it was, it was on the last slide, so we'll make sure. That's a great suggestion and we will certainly do that. And as we're making decisions for staffing and other purposes, we, yesterday, we pulled the slide out and said, what are the board's priorities? Special education, English language learners, behavior, those sorts of things. And so just yesterday, we had those at the top of our priority and used those as part of our decision-making process.
Anyone else? Uh, Mr. Earl Campbell?
This is not, I would say as a, as a board, what we need to do is talk to our delegation about this student-based cost. Do they realize the poverty in this county? Nobody looks at that. You may be richest because of the price of property and land, but we have, uh, large, sad, our people in poverty. I, I would suggest that the board sit down when we go to Columbia and talk with the delegation about this.
Mr. Guyer and then Ms. Vidrich?
We have to realize that this has an impact on our class size. And we have high-poverty schools that the state says we should have a 16 to 1 student-to-teacher ratio. But if they don't give us the funds, we can't hire the additional teachers to be able to get to a 16 to 1 student-faculty ratio. So that's what has to be talked to, to the folks at, in Olympia, that just because we have all the wealth in this county does not mean that we can afford to get down to the student-faculty ratios that we need to take care of this achievement gap. But that's, that's the key issue.
Ms. Vidrich?
And Mr. Campbell, to your point, those of us that are going up next week to Columbia, my plan after reviewing some of the information that was in today's presentation, Tanya, and thank you very much, and also in Dr. Stratos's presentation that she will be providing later on, it's the breakdown of the level of poverty in our schools. So I think that that's really important information that we bring up next week. We'll have it right there with us.
Mr. Smith, did you have a question?
I did have a concern, uh, just listening to some of what was being said. I'm hoping that we will get the budget in enough time as, as Mr., as I already said, um, because I think we need to go to the, go through the budget very carefully, line item by line item. I think this time is going to be very, uh, it's going to be very important that, that we take our time on this budget, that we're not rushed and that we go through a line by a line, line item by, uh, line item like Mr. Dowling said. And I hope that we get enough time to where we will be able to do that. Because it, it, it seems like this time there may even be things that we may have to look into and take a deeper dive in, in the past. That's all I have to say.
Dr. Ososki?
To go along with what Will said, I think that it would be important for any of us right now, now that we're into the budget process and the timeline, I think it would be useful for us to send any requests for specific information directly to Frank. I know that in the past or the last budget cycle, people requested, you know, usage reports and things like that. So any reports or data and things like that that need to be brought to the full board for attention and looking at, I think we should go ahead and make those requests. I know I've written down a couple that I might ask for. But just to speed things along and make sure that that information gets out to the full board, that would be useful, I think, to make sure we stay on time.
Uh, Mr. Strevinger, did you?
Yeah, I, I just want, when we go up to talk to the legislature or when we call them, what specifically are we going to be asking them to do? Usually it's more effective if we, if we give them something we want them to actually do, a little more specific than take account of our poverty. They would, we would be asking them to change their formula or index of taxpaying ability? Is that, is that the target we? Because, because that doesn't include poverty or it does include poverty, yeah?
It's, um, I, I, I believe it's based on assessed value of the county and the taxable values that are, the taxes that are provided from that. So I'm, I'm not aware of it having a poverty index in it.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get us a real specific target to maybe include poverty as part of that formula or if there's some other way somebody can think of before March 4th, those that are going up, I can let them know. Because my, my experience with legislators is they're, they're very helpful if you give them something really specific to do. If you, if you make them try to figure it out, they don't have time.
One, may I, just a moment. The, at school resource officers would be a very good topic to talk about. Just as a suggestion, we have received this, this current school year funding for two school resource officer. The funding goes directly to the law enforcement divisions. We do not, it does not flow through the district, but we work coordinated with them. So it is my understanding that those, the funding for those two positions will continue next year. But will they give us additional funding? So there, it's unclear in this House budget currently whether there will be additional funding coming so that they will increase those numbers on an annual basis. So that's one suggestion that might be a topic of conversation and topic of interest and definitely one of your priorities this year, so.
Ms. Orshak?
At a previous agenda, there was an item on there for us to revise our legislative agenda as a board. I don't see it on the work session. Will that be revisited? Kathy, I think that was maybe your suggestion.
It, it was and I withdrew it. It was, it was just regarding one aspect. It was the, the pre-K program. And after further talking with, with people, I, I felt the way it was written was probably the best. So I, I withdrew that.
Okay, so those heading up to Columbia for two days at the Capitol, obviously the foundation for those discussions is our already established legislative agenda, correct?
And I was thinking, you know, our lobbyist is going to be here. So David's question was a very good one. What exactly, you know, how do we tackle this would be a good question for her. Dr. Ososki?
I just had a question, which it, it might kind of roll into that conversation with her as well. But I was wondering if there was anything on the radar, any projections for additional ELL funding or special education funding, anything like that presently?
Not that I'm aware of, but I can certainly get an update from our grants office, our federal programs office.
Mr. Dowling?
Back to the budget process, if I may. The board determined some time ago that the budget will include any recommendations that are made by the efficiency study. Do we have time built into the budget cycle? I realize those recommendations are not known at this point, but do we have time to build them into the budget cycle and still keep us informed?
So the board will get.
Mike?
Can, can you hear, okay. The board will get a report on the efficiency study on March 17th. That'll be the final report. And so we'll be using that, you know, any recommendations that we see in there as we move through the rest of the process. Additionally, I think last time, Mr. Dowling, you asked me if they were going to be on-site at any time. They've been on-site this week and have, have spent a couple of days here already this week.
Good, thank you.
Hey, any further questions for Ms. Kroski? Right, thank you. Next on our agenda, we're a little bit, uh, running a little early, but is Mr. Troyer here?
He is, yes.
So Hilton Head Island TIF update with John Troyer.
I'm going to start and then bring John in. So John Troyer is the Director of Finance for Hilton, uh, Town of Hilton Head Island and he is here. I appreciate you coming today, John. And we're going to sort of tag-team this presentation. I thought it was really important to start with sort of some information about what is a TIF. So I needed to remind myself a little bit of some of these things. And so it's been a while since I, um, had dug into the, to the topic. And so I wanted to make sure that the board, particularly new members as well, knew, had information about what a TIF is. And then we can move in at, toward the end of the presentation on specifically about Hilton Head Island TIF. So tax increment finance districts are a funding method of allocating tax to create public-owned projects that stimulate private investment and improve the quality of life within a certain area. Parks, pedestrian-friendly roads and other projects are just a few examples. And we have participated in a number of TIFs over the years in Beauf, in Beaufort County School District. The TIF, the year a TIF is created is called the base year. And once the boundaries of a TIF district are set, a calculation of each property in that, within that TIF district are set and a, and the assessed value is created within the district for that year. Each year thereafter, another calculation of every, every property in the TIF, the assessed value is created and the difference between the two in, is called an increment. And it, it is, there is a certain distinguishment between the base and the increment and what we do with the funding on each of those. The particulars years millage is applied to that year's increment. So this year's millage would be applied to that increment and the amount is then remitted to the TIF district. So if Hilton Head or Town of Port Royal or Beaufort City, any of those, the, the funds would be collected at the treasurer's level and then remitted over to the town or municipality. The parties within the, with millages paying into the TIF only receive the base year's assessed value multiplied the current year's millage. So this is kind of a little chart and I found. And basically it establishes that you, the baseline property value is what you collect from the creation of the TIF to the termination of the TIF. So you continue to get the current year's TIF, uh, millage rates on the properties that are considered the baseline properties. So as, as properties increase in value or move into the TIF, it, there becomes a tax increment. The tax revenues climb. And so that yellow section of tax revenues, that growth there, is then remitted to the TIF to, um, to participate at a rate. The district has generally participated for, in debt service only, as, as is with the presentation we're going to have today with Hilton Head. And so that is remitted to the taxing authority until the termination date. Once the termination date ends, then all of those revenues come back to the district, the baseline and any new property taxes that are as a result of the expansion or the development of that area. So by state law, the county treasurers are in charge of collecting, accounting for and remitting the TIF revenues to the TIF districts, which would be Town of Hilton Head, Town of Port Royal and that sort of thing. The county auditor then certifies that the properties within the TIF districts are correct. The county auditor then certifies that the properties within the TIF districts are correct. The county finance department makes all TIF allocating calculations and journal entries into their general ledger. And the treasurer reviews them and remits the TIF payments to the corresponding entities. Monthly TIF reports are provided by the county to the school district. We receive a monthly email from, on every TIF that the district has and the revenues that have been redirected to the TIF. So currently, Beaufort County School District participates in two TIFs. One is the Port Royal TIF and one is the Hilton Head Island TIF. And we call it number two because this is an expansion of one, of a TIF that began in nineteen ninety-nine. Uh, this one began in, um, uh, fifteen years later, twenty fourteen, I believe it was. And so we'll talk a little bit more about that one. Um, the Port Royal representatives were unavailable to come today, so we're gonna plan those at a later date. So we'll stick to, um, we'll just be discussing Hilton Head Island TIF today. And then we'll come back and follow up with another discussion at a later date on Port Royal. So with that, I'm gonna ask John to come forward.
John Troyer, Town of Hilton Head, uh, Finance Director. Thank you for, uh, the opportunity to come. How do I advance these, um? Okay, they'll do it for us. Okay, we're in, uh, TIF one was for fifteen years from nineteen ninety-nine to twenty fourteen. Um, that is complete. Um, we're in the fifth year of a ten-year extension on TIF two. Um, that was an additional fifty million dollars. Um, it's working like it, um, is, was supposed to, like it was designed. Um, a couple of big projects that you see, you can come see USCB campus on the island. Um, it, it's beautiful and it's a great addition to the community. Um, our Low Country Celebration Park is well underway, under construction. And that's gonna be another, um, valuable asset for the community. Um, the TIF is designed to make some community improvements, um, inspire some private development, private investment, raise our tax base, and that would help the school district in the long term by raising their tax revenues in the future. And so it's working like it is supposed to. And, uh, we certainly, um, are excited about being able to report that we have, um, a lot of progress being made. And then we are certainly, um, I can go through some of these next few slides. Yeah, our participating entities, Beaufort County, the school district, PSD and, and of course the island herself. We are participating. The investment that the, um, school district has, um, done here, thirty-two million dollars in the first fifteen years. And you see it's about a million dollars a year. And we're in the fifth year of that ten-year extension. And, and so before I move on, um, and then the expectation is we're not having any discussions about, uh, an, another TIF after this. And so, um, those, um, what's now being, um, invested toward the TIF will come back to the school district once the TIF is finished. And so five more years and, um, that will, um, assist the district in the future. And, um, our assessed values will be up, they're already up. Um, some of the project expenditures, pathways, roadways, land, parks, facilities, project administration and consulting, our parks number is gonna go up, way up this year because of Low Country Celebration Park. The facilities, the number one thing is the USCB campus on the island. I'm here and available. Um, we do a report each year, but I'm certainly welcome to, um, any questions and any detail, and we can provide detail. We keep two different funds. We did, um, for the initial TIF district, we did two different bond issues in the fifteen years to try to jumpstart, um, our investment, try to jumpstart the projects, try to jumpstart private investment. For the TIF extension, we've done one, a twenty mi- twenty-eight million dollar bond issue in order to get some of these projects started early in the ten years instead of later in the ten years. Uh, we didn't wanna wait for the tax collections to come to get the project started. And so I certainly welcome any questions.
Mr. Guyer?
This is a new thing for me. I've never heard of this type of, uh, of relationship. And I, I would have some real questions about the return on investment. About how much did property values increase? And how much of that increase is due to the investment in these projects? And, and, you know, it seems to me that we are paying, the school district is paying, uh, quite a bit of this. And so I, I just, I just am curious about the metrics.
One, one number, I think, to start with, i- if we go back to the, the one that looked like a triangle earlier on. The school district, uh, stays whole, and so the initial, um, taxes that went to the school district continue to go to the school district. And so that the TIF is a tax increment, and so it's just the growth that's going into, a- and that's what we're using for these projects is just the growth in assessed value, and so we can measure that. But the direct connection to the increase in assessed value, it isn't there. But this is the one that I was hoping to talk about. And you can see that, uh, because there's money for projects, that does show that the assessed value is going up and, and this tax increment is available for these projects. But if you look at the bottom, that baseline property value continues to go to the school district. And so it's only the increase that is going into these projects. But it, it, it's a, it's a decision for the school board and, and this is what's happening.
Ms. Orshak?
So I have several questions. Hello, good morning.
Good morning.
So from the original term on the TIF, it looks like, if I'm reading this correctly, um, we contributed the lion's share, thirty-two million plus, correct? And that's on page one of the supplemental handout.
Yes.
That we have. So the, the number on, um, the numbered, the dollar amount cited on page ten, the sixty-five million is from all of the entities.
Together, yes.
Contributions, okay. So as we go down to TIF two, the extension that to, was approved in two thousand fourteen, the total will be fifty million from all the entities, that's the cap. And thirteen million would be the cap for the school district.
Yes, it, the first was sixty-five at fifteen years, and the second was ten years for fifty, so yes.
Okay, so when this was presented to the board back in two thousand fourteen, um, I, I was not aware at the time that the school district could in fact contribute operating funds to a specific project and not make the commitment, the long-term commitment to a five or ten-year TIF. Were those laws in place at that time?
I, I'm not aware of the laws at, at this time of, other than the information we've provided to you today. We'd have to go back and take a look at that.
And, and I'll tell you why I'm asking, because of another parallel situation the board is, will be looking at over the next month or two. Um, we, we, um, we, we thought we belonged to a TIF, which would have allowed the board to contribute to the building of a public, uh, facility with, with TCL. But we don't. Um, that's a separate conversation. But what we learned in these exchanges is that we can use our operating funds to contribute to a very specific project, the building of a public facility, TCL. Uh, their new culinary institute. So that information was not presented to the board in two thousand fourteen. It may be that the law was not in place at that time. So I really would like to understand when that law, um, it came about, how long that was in place. Because I think the board didn't possibly have all the information it needed. Um, at that time, conversations were focused, uh, surrounding, um, you know, the building of USCB's facility on the south end. So I, I would like to know the answer to that. Uh, that's for our in-house folks. Thank you.
We'll, we'll relay that to legal counsel.
Appreciate that.
Any other questions? Ms. Fidger?
I'm just interested in the, the length of this TIF one and TIF two. Is a twenty-five year TIF typical or are there, were there some reasons? What, was it, was the idea to have an extension all along? Or did you find that the first fifteen years wasn't moving along as quickly as you had anticipated? So twenty-five years obligation is a long time.
Yes, I, I think the, um, I would characterize it as TIF one was successful. And after the success of TIF one, there was a couple of projects, especially the USCB project, that, uh, this was a vehicle in order to help make it happen. And, and so I thought it was, TIF two is building on the success of TIF one.
Dr. Osneski?
On that TIF two extension, it says the school district cap is of thirteen million. Where are we presently?
Um, slide, a few slides later, there was, it's about a million a year in tax revenues that have been redirected. Um, down the other direction, yep.
Can you use your, the microphone, please?
Sure.
Uh, yes, slide twelve de- demonstrates that the TIF one revenues were collected through, uh, twenty fourteen of thirty-two million, thirty-two point five million. Would have been redirected in two thousand sixteen through nineteen or approximately a million dollars a year totaling three point eight million so far. So if we look, I did a calculation and about, on this, that particular topic. If we continue that pattern, will we meet or exceed the cap? And the answer is no. So we would have to generate one point three million every single year in order to get to that cap approximately. So we, we do not appear to be in any danger of meeting or exceeding that cap. Or we wouldn't exceed it because there, there is a cap, uh, obviously. But, uh, we, there don't seem to be in any danger of meeting, um, meeting that cap this time.
Ms. Orshak?
I, just a follow-up comment to Ms. Fidgerich. The MCIP agreement that the school district is currently involved in, even though we don't participate in the MCIP with Bluffton, um, with the county, the Town of Bluffton, is for twenty years. So I don't know if that's common or not, but it's certainly seen in a few instances.
Mr. Strabinger?
I, um, I'm gonna get back to, to Dick Guyer's question. Did, did we recalculate the base when we did the extension?
That was before my time and before John's time. John and I came on board in our positions about the same time, about three years ago. So we weren't involved in the calculations at that time, so.
Well, my thinking was if we recalculated the base for the extension, then we would have seen the impact from the first, you know, we would have a delta there that we could look at and say, this was the return you got because the base went up this much.
And, and one of the things that, um, we get information from the county, um, from the county auditor's office, from the, um, county treasurer's office. And, um, those calculations are done between those two offices.
Okay, so we do know the impact to the, to the school district?
We might be able to find out.
Okay. That was good, that was good. I, I thought I had you there for a minute.
Mr. Mel Campbell?
Yeah, I'm concerned with, uh, what's, what the intent of the TIF.
Your microphone.
I know very little about its intent, but my mind say it was intended to upgrade, uh, areas that were pretty much low in tax values. And, and in the long run, it'll be improved. But then I look at, you know, who is benefiting? And I don't, you know, exactly understand, you know, how come, is that the best use of TIF in terms of the county? Does the county control it or is it each entity?
The way that I understand this is that when the TIF was presented, the TIF one and TIF two, that, um, a plan of projects were, um, under discussion and, and agreed to among the partners. And, and this is what we will do, um, with the TIF revenues. And, and that was agreed upon when the entities agreed to join the TIF.
Yeah, I wanna see, I, I don't understand. I mean, maybe we need to find the history out. But my understanding is the TIF idea came about before the projects. And the idea was what was sold. And then the projects came in later. And those projects didn't exactly agree with what the intent of the idea was. And, uh, you know, that's just for future reference for, for other boards and the use of TIF.
I have information, uh, I believe a presentation or a report from an entity. Uh, I believe it was a consultant po- potentially with the Town of Hilton Head from five years ago, uh, or two thousand fourteen. That timeframe, I can share that with the board. I'll see if I can get it made in an electronic form. But I do, we do have presentations from that period of time. So I'll see, it was very detailed, very lengthy calculations, uh, projects, pictures, everything. So we'll see what we can conjure up and get that as an update to the board.
Ms. Orshak?
So typically, these TIFs or MCIPs, and I'm not completely clear on what's the difference between the two. Um, but hopefully later, uh, conversations will clarify that. Typically, they're used to in, contribute and improve blighted areas. Um, this was not the case clearly on Hilton Head Island. The, the conversation back then leaned more toward, well, you know, this is the economic engine of the county and therefore any improvements you put in, you're going to get back. I mean, they, they put forth some very persuasive, compelling arguments at that time. You also had a very, very new board at that time. Um, it, just contributing to, to some of that, just to give you a little background, um, on how that, uh, played out. And honestly, it was very well received by the board at that time, Mr. Campbell can tell you. Um, as was, uh, there was another proposal out of Bluffton at that time, which fell through because some of the other players, um, it, chose not to participate. So the school district was being approached frequently. Um, and I, I suspect we probably will be in the future, perhaps not from Hilton Head Island, uh, but, but maybe from some other municipalities.
Yeah, the, the town does not have any plans for a TIF three, and there's no discussions on that.
Dr. Osneski?
Yeah, I'm just looking at, um, the different, you know, projects and things like that that were, um, done through this. And knowing Hilton Head and the Outlay and everything like that, it, it appears that the majority of the impact would have been to commercial properties with regard to property values. So I'd be interested to know how the property values of the commercial properties changed along these different areas, um, to see what that actual impact was over time. Um, cause, I mean, everybody else lives in plantations on Hilton Head, so I don't know if the impact would have been as direct in those areas.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Mr. Grissom?
Okay, good morning, Board. As you know, way back in, uh, actually four or five months ago, we had, at my last presentation, we talked about, um, security and what we're gonna do to improve things. And there was, in fact, was a board motion at the time to pursue, um, armed security and then eventually switching over to, to SROs or police officers. So that's kind of what I'm here today to talk to you about. Um, but I think before we talk about that, I wanna talk about the differences between an SRO and an armed security guard. Now, an SRO is a fully trained police officer who went through a vigorous hiring process of probably six months, maybe a year. Had to go through a twelve-week academy in Columbia. Um, to be an SRO, they would have had to have had some experience on the road, dealing with domestics and violent situations and emergency planning and all kinds of things with their experience as a police officer. Now, an armed security guard, to be an armed security guard in the state, they gotta be SLED certified. To be SLED certified, they take online courses. Um, now, I'm not trying to diminish what the, those courses are, 'cause I've never had to take them. But they're, they are online courses, all but when they go to the range. The range act obvi- obviously is a active participation type thing. So when you have an SRO, they, they provide security for the building as well as what, that's what an armed security guard also does. Um, assistant emergency planning, state law requires me to use the local police departments to assist me with approving and helping me with my emergency planning, so that's what I do. So an armed security officer wouldn't help me in either one of those, um, areas. Also, a police officer provides training in the school for, for crisis situations with the staff. They teach law, law classes to kids, they counsel kids, um, they serve as a, um, community liaison. Now, none of those you're gonna get from an armed security officer. So I, I just wanted you guys to know the differences between the two before we pursue anything further. So, um, since October, what have we done? Myself and Dr. Rodriguez have, have met with all the police chiefs, as well as the sheriff. We've talked about numerous security issues in our schools and things we could do better and, and getting some ideas. And we've also And we've also talked about adding police officers to our schools. Now, I've given you guys briefings on that in the past about how long it would take for especially the county to add that many, um, police officers. And it's going to take some time. Um, in addition to that, and I think I heard Tonya talk about it also, we have added two, um, police officer SROs to our schools already. In addition to that, we added one to right choices that didn't cost us anything this year, although we're going to have to start paying for that next year. So, um, I've kind of put two plans together here. The first plan pretty much just entitles the existing SROs, hiring security, an armed security officer for, for other locations. As you can see, I, I broke down the cost. The first cost for next year, if we hired sixteen security officers, would be seven hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Again, these are all rough estimates. And for the, the course of this, over five years, I added a three percent increase every year um, for the cost of the security and the SROs that we already have. Um, you can see the total cost, what it goes to. This year, it's projected to be about a million thirty-nine thousand roughly. And over the course of the time, it's going to go up every year. In five years, it's expected to be a little over two million dollars. Now, the total cost over that period of time, added on to what we have for SROs, is roughly four million dollars. That's just for armed security officers. Um, the next page actually shows you a graph of pretty much the same thing, talking about the SRO costs with the added, um, armed security officer. And it gives you a little breakdown of what it costs per year for each. The, the next one fits more in line of what your motion was, and, and that's what I tried to, uh, to incorporate the cost for this. Now, the first year, I've, I've got sixteen armed security officers. And then the plan from there would be to add three police officers per year until our need is met. Now, the total, the total cost of that over that period of time, over five or six years, is an added almost eight million dollars to the budget in addition to the SROs we already have. I've given you a cost, a total breakdown. Again, this year, we're paying a little over a million dollars to add the sixteen security officers, um, almost two million. Then obviously it goes up from there. And I've given you, I've given you a breakdown of what the cost is per year over that period of time. Um, ultimately, in two thousand twenty-six, being fully staffed with all police officers, um, you're looking at almost three million dollars compared to what we're paying now, about a million dollars. Again, this doesn't take into account the, we have two free ones right now. We have no idea how long those two are going to last. And we have no idea what additional funding we're going to get from the state for grants to add SROs at the state's expense. So this, these, neither one of these charts show that, because we have no idea at this point. And again, the next chart just shows you a breakdown of what it costs for armed security, um, the total difference and the total cost for that. So I know that was kind of quick, but then, um, you know, this information was provided for you guys for, for budgetary consideration and, and, and I welcome any questions you might have about the process.
Hey, um, Mr. Dowling and then Mr. Stribinger?
Yes, sir.
You've added right choices and three elementary schools. So how many elementary schools are still without that resource?
I would prefer that be discussed in executive session. I don't think we need to be talking about which schools have them and which schools don't. I'm just giving you a number of how many I think we need for the district. I don't want to be too specific.
Let me ask another question and see if we can deal with it in public. How long will it take you to reach a hundred percent, which is what the school board wants in terms of coverage?
I believe for-
At the rate of three a year?
That's going to take us till approximately two thousand twenty-six. But all the schools would be covered next year with armed security officers the very first year. So every, that meets your requirement for covering every school?
In addition, I think it's important to note that it, it's not just that the district says, we want to hire all the SROs next year, right? It, it's the availability of the agencies to provide the SROs, to, to, to have them in place to provide us with. So it's not, it's not just on, uh, on, on, on our shoulders to make that decision. Because if we budgeted for it and we had, and, and we said, this is it, and, and we're having it, it may not be able to be provided just next year, right? So, so it, it would have to be a phase in process so they could keep up with that.
So roughly in October, we had those discussions with the superintendent just talked about, um, staffing, how long would it take? We have more meetings scheduled with all the police chiefs and the sheriff coming up the first two weeks in March to go over the plan and whatever the direction we get from the board.
Mr. Stribinger?
Thank you. Um, in this scenario, what happens to the CROs? I, I believe-
CROs are still there, and I've been assured they will still be there. They will still be teaching those classes we've talked about. They, they're going around now finishing that up. The CRO program is not going anywhere.
Okay.
But again, that's, that's all paid for by the sheriff, and that doesn't cost us a dime.
That's why I asked about it.
Yeah, yeah.
I wondered where, I know it gets funded for those, and I just wondered if we're going to have armed security guard, the CROs will still be doing what they do.
They will still be teaching classes and assisting me with all the drills we do.
And when all, when we are fully staffed with SROs, we won't need CROs anymore, will we?
I think, well, that's, that's the sheriff's decision, but I think, yeah, we, we still need them, yes. The more, the better. It's more officers in our schools, it's more officers that I, because when we do a drill, um, sometimes I, I need three or four police officers there. So the SRO in that school is not enough. I bring in two or three or four. Bluffton normally has six or seven officers with me, including the command staff sometimes, assisting with the drills that we do.
Yeah, I'm just asking, because when you shared the difference between an armed security guard and a, a security officer, some of the CRO tasks you listed, you know, educating and doing all that. So that's what made me wonder about why we would need the CROs, and I'm looking for a cost offset. You know, because I know that, that Sheriff Tanner gets funded for those five positions. So I'm looking to see if maybe he should give us those five positions funding.
Hey, Dr. Wosniewski?
I know you can't answer that, David.
Interesting.
Um, I had a question about the increase. Um, so you said by, when adding three SROs each year, that's going to approximately add eight million each year to the budget?
Okay, so you're talking about, well, the three SROs-
Page, page seven, I think it is?
Page seven.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out.
Okay, so what I've done is, like, the very first year, two thousand twenty-one, we have sixteen armed security officers. The following year, in two thousand twenty-two, we would have thirteen armed security officers, um, three at new SROs, which we got to pay a startup cost for, which is roughly a hundred and eleven to a hundred and fifteen thousand. Um, so all those figures are added together, not to mention what it costs for vehicles.
I don't think it, it's the eight million. I think what he was getting at at the end was, at the end was a two point eight.
Okay.
What I was saying about the eight million was over the whole entire time.
I wrote down in my notes, eight million each year added to the budget, and that's where I was-
For the, for the, for the security officers and the, um, SROs, the life of this whole plan, six, six years, the added cost over that period of time would be roughly eight million dollars in addition to the existing SROs we pay now.
I'm not, got it. Thank you.
Ms. Orshak and then Mr. Dowling?
So to clarify for the public, just a brief summary. We have SROs at all of our high schools, all of our middle schools. Do we have them at our K-eight schools, which include the middle school years? That I'm not clear on myself.
Yes, ma'am, we do.
We do. So the K-eight schools have them, the middle schools have them, and the high schools have them. We are solely focusing on all other elementary schools at this time.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Um, Mr. Mel Campbell, I'm sorry, Mr. Dowling, Mr. Mel Campbell?
I, you know, appreciate the update. But I thought the, the, the reason we went to this was because we weren't going to be able to be facilitated by the, by the police departments. So, you know, even, you know, that, that's a, uh, an intangible thing as we go along, I suppose, right?
Absolutely. Some of these, this plan may have, um, three one-year and three and three and three. It may be one year where the police says, hey, we can't add any this year because of manpower shortages or, you know, it takes some time and money to hire officers, and there's not that many applying right now, according to the police department, so.
So, yeah, I just want to make clear in terms of our, but our task is, we're talking security of the schools. At best, we can make it happen right now, right? It's, it's obvious we could, you know, bring the Marines in and do a better job. But the best, that best-case scenario, who we got available and who will be available in the near future is what we want our plan to evolve around, right?
Right, I, I think that the outline that I have right here is, working with the adding three per year is probably the best-case scenario for us. I mean, I, I think that's doable, but-
That's what we want, that's what I want to hear. What's doable, and that's our best option. Because we're not, I don't know all the finer details.
And, and, and that's what we're after in trying to, to project it out, to get there in terms of, of what I believe the board is asking, right? Um, if we find ourselves in a situation where, you know, we're trying to add three, right? As, as we've projected, and we can only add two, well, because that's all that's available, right? So we add two, and we hang on to an additional, right? I mean, to, to, to work through till we get to the desired goal.
Okay, Mr. Dowling and then Mr. Smith?
At Operations Committee, when you reported to us that you had met with the various law enforcement agencies, and I'm sure that Mr. Otting will recall this as well. The Operations Committee was unanimous in asking you to, uh, follow up their statements that they will make this their number one priority, that you get that in writing. Uh, how are we doing on that?
I don't recall being asked to get something in writing from the sheriff that says this will be the plan. We did discuss it with the sheriff.
So what I, what I'll say to you is we have another set of meetings that are coming up. I will ask for it again, but here's the thing, right? I can't make them give it to us in writing, right? But I will ask.
What we have been trying to do is to document the myriad phone conversations to take place between the school district and local governments that get either lost in translation later on or altered in translation later on. So we asked that any meetings that you have with the law enforcement agencies be documented after the fact in writing to so, to let will the Operations Committee would know what was discussed and what was committed to.
So even if I document it myself, what was discussed, does that, that meets your expectations, or do you want something?
That would be the least acceptable, but acceptable. But I'm sure Mr. Otting recalls that we were, that we had asked for an email to confirm that from the law enforcement agencies.
I, I thought you, can I talk? Back when you requested something in writing from the police department, said that we were dealing with security and our, and our, um, recommendation for fencing and different things like that. That's what you requested something in writing for, if I remember correctly.
Specifically that it was there, that they were committing in writing to make this a high priority for them.
And I made that request, and they're not putting anything in writing.
Okay, well, that's what I-
For, for that, that, that was, that was, that's a different subject than what we're talking about now, I believe.
Yes, that's exactly right. That's what I was going to say. The conversation that we had was around fencing and that being their number one priority, and that Mr. Grissom did request from them, so.
Hey, Mr. Smith?
Well, just to kind of, uh, piggyback off what Mr. Dowling said, I do agree that it should be in writing for the fact of now there's not, the, the, and there's not, I said, or I thought, or, or what I meant, and that is take ownership of what you said, and it's clear, it's clear upon what, what you meant and, and what you were requesting. And so there's documentation, uh, documentation is, uh, is, is, is everything. And so, you know, um, we can't allow local law enforcement to say what we told, or we thought we said, or, or, or we, we can assume what they want or what they, or what they would like as partners to have on, on, on school property. Uh, if, if, if they are, if they feel that strong about it, then I don't see, I don't see the problem with putting it in writing and saying to the school board, this is what we want, and this is, or this is what we think it will help us out in days and months and years to come to be successful, uh, and to keep the kids of this district safe. I don't see a problem with that. But also, um, my main concern was, I, I, I was listening, and I heard that Hei was talking about security, and that's how security, uh, only go through, uh, uh, programs on, on SLED through the computer or internet. I don't think that, that, all, all that is true, and, and I think it would be, it would be rather this, this, uh, this takes for us to discount security and what, and what they can do versus law enforcement. Because there's certain security agencies that, that, that have lock, lock, backup, and also that, that have the same, same radios and same that law enforcement have, and that, that they, actually some security companies, I believe, in, in this, in this county that works for law enforcement, and they're on the same frequency that when they, and they can call each other. So I, so I, I mean, and, and, and they're armed. So I mean, uh, it's really not, sometimes, I think, we, we, what we're worried about is more bang for our buck. And we're worried about the kids, the kids being safe and not, uh, not, not their criterias and, you know, because technically speaking, every officer does not has, has, has a training. Every officer does not have crisis training. So I mean, to say that what one has and what one does, I think we need to be careful of that and, and, and more cognizance, cognizance of, uh, of what we're saying and what we want. I think that's, that's important from here moving forward. That's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Smith, just to address what you said, I, I didn't mean to, um, um, talk negatively about armed security officers. They do have full arrest powers, they work with law enforcement hand in hand. If they're at a school and something happens and an arrest needs to be made, they, they are fully capable of making an arrest and putting an end to the threat. Um, I was pretty much just talking about the, um, the experience on the road, the ability to, to speak with our kids one-on-one for counseling and for, to give law-related classes to the staff and to the, um, assist me in emergency management training and planning, because that's what state law requires me to use, is the police department for my planning. I have to submit that to them every year, um, and we meet with the SROs, and, uh, in fact, I send it to the command staff of the sheriff's department for review. That was my only point.
Uh, we're talking about the kid's safety here. We're not talking about officers being on, on, on the road. We're talking about the safety in the, in the building and, and the staff, uh, on, 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 on hand and, uh, the road training, and I, I hear what you're saying. But in, in the past, I, I, I think it would be kind of discredited to say that maybe, maybe, maybe the boards use, uh, uh, security at one elementary schools, and from my standard, uh, groups from you, they, 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 they did an outstanding job. So, you know, I'm, I'm trying to see within the two, I'm hoping that the board did not pick us up as a mistake when we had that, uh, when we had that security company at that, uh, elementary school at that time. So I'm just trying to, you know, figure out, so that's why I'm being cognizant of what, of what we say. Uh, just, just not to go back and forth or get a, a, a disagreement with you about this. That's just, that's just my stance, so that's all. I think it takes much more conversation on it. Thank you.
So, Mr. Smith, thank you. Uh, you know, I understand the point that you're making. I think the, 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 the purpose of, of the comments that were made is just to make sure that we are all informed of different possibilities. I mean, we just had another presentation where we talked about a TIF, and within that conversation, we also heard that when the TIF was first brought forward, there were certain things people didn't understand. So I think just bringing clarity around what is and what isn't with respect to the different roles is important so that as we make decisions, if something were to come up later on, uh, everybody would be on the same page around it. I think it's just valuable. So it wasn't intended as a, as a negative on any, any, any group or anything like that, just information.
Ms. Orshak?
So should it be the board's will to staff all of these SRO, um, positions in our school? And based on the Beaufort County Sheriff's Office ability to staff those positions, um, if they were to be phased in, do we in fact have a priority list in place already for our elementary schools based on, you know, external or internal factors? Do we have that in place?
So I, I think it's a-
Higher-risk schools?
I think it's a combination of things in that process, right? One is, uh, I guess, I guess, I guess your question, the answer to your question would be yes, okay? But I also think that, uh, that it also is subject to the availability of different agencies to provide, uh, the number of, of officers. For example, uh, one agency, uh, if, if, if we have these particular schools that, that we might want to staff first, right? Uh, the availability of that agency to have an officer, an SRO, uh, to staff two of them in the same area uh, may not be possible, right? But I don't necessarily want to turn around, turn away the- But I don't necessarily want to turn around, turn away the ability of staffing one in that area which can be filled and one in another area that we want to be, right? That we also need to fill. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
But the double staffing piece is, is that?
I don't, I don't mean, I don't mean to double staff a school. I mean, uh, if there are two schools within a particular agency's, uh, jurisdiction, right? That, that, that we may want to, may need, that we'll need to staff, right? Uh, but if they could only provide one, uh, one officer during this go-around, right? We would provide one there, but if another agency has one that could meet one of the vacancies in, in another area, we would do that too.
So, so here's a question for you. I thought all were coming in through the Beaufort County Sheriff's Office. Does your statement imply that maybe Bluffton PD might provide some and Beaufort PD might provide some?
Okay, so basically we have four jurisdictions that have our schools that require, um, SROs or security. Beaufort County has Beaufort County Schools. Bluffton has the Bluffton Schools. Beaufort City has Beaufort Schools, Beuford City Schools and Port Royal has the one elementary. So we work with four different jurisdictions, which is why we meet with four different, um, police chiefs and/or sheriff. So they, they're, they're each responsible for their own jurisdiction for providing security. Some are in better position to others to hire right of ways, what he was trying to point out, I believe. And the other part of your question is the priority list. One of the things we've talked about is location, how far out are some of these schools? And what's the travel time to get there in case something happened? That's, that's one of the things we were also looking at.
Thank you. Hey, Dr. Wysniewski, then Mr. Mel Campbell.
I had a couple of things just based on, uh, the conversation that was going on. I'm gonna go first to that, um, concept of getting something in writing. So just like we do with, you know, making sure everybody's on the same page with response plans and things like that. I think everybody needs to be on the same page of what our plans are and where we see this going with SROs in our district. So as you're having those conversations, I would really like to see, even if it's as little as a letter from you that just says pursuant to our conversation, this is what Beaufort County School District is planning with regard to SROs. Because like you mentioned, we have four different jurisdictions that are involved in these conversations. We need to make sure that all these players are on the same page and they know what, what our trajectory is. Um, so I really would support something in writing on that. Going back to the conversation about the differences between an SRO and an armed security guard. The armed security guards are, it is your intention for them to participate though in your drills and preparations and things like that, right? So they might not be, they might not assist in the planning, but they will participate in the drills.
Absolutely, absolutely, yes. And in fact, when we had an armed security officer at Beaufort Elementary, he did participate in our drills. And he learned a lot. He was very-
Great. And then, um, also this might be a conversation that's for a later date, um, and possibly an executive session, but I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that with regard to the armed security guards, we kind of hold the, the cards in putting out what qualifications we want on those individuals that we do hire for those roles. So, um, you know, while they may not have certain, uh, training that an SRO does, we may be able to say, okay, we'd like to have, or we have preference for, um, former law enforcement officers or former military, things like that. So I, that might be a conversation that needs to be had later. I'd like to see what your plan is for any potential qualification you would want to see in those armed security guards, but, um, just wanted to make sure that everybody was on the same page with that.
Okay, so your first one, I'll, I'll make sure that when we have our meetings with the police chiefs and the sheriff, first I'll ask them to put something, the meeting in writing, and if they won't, then I will. And I'll make sure it gets sent to the board.
Mr. Mel Campbell, Mr. John Dowling and Mr. Strippinger.
Yeah, along the same line. I think we, we cannot overlook the fact that we need to do a long-term plan and phase that in with the instructional plans for, for the future and where the, where the people are gonna be, where the students are gonna be and, and along with the, the referendum security plan. I think in the long term, we need to look forward on where these people are gonna be placed and how many we're gonna need to place in these particular entities, these, these schools. They, they're gonna evolve and they're gonna change and we gotta be on the forefront of this. So, you know, that's, that's the thought in terms of train officers and lobbying for more, more budget for those particular things, but we got, you know, we have to look at that whole picture. We want our schools to be where, where it should be in 10 years. That's, that's just a comment.
Mr. Dowling.
I have just a comment and a quick question. At least one of the four jurisdictions that you're dealing with has by any objective standard a high turnover rate in the chief position.
In the chief position?
Yeah. Now, I'm not asking, this is fact, okay? I think it's important that, for what Dr. Wysniewski was saying, what I was saying about getting it in writing, because the, this is a long-term plan. It's gonna take till 2026 to accomplish. They, with the average, that police department goes through chiefs, there could be three chiefs in the, in the, in the timeframe. I don't want to hear, well, that was before my time. I wasn't around when that commitment was made, okay? That's my observation. My question though is, you, when you were elaborating on why a SRO's training is preferred, you used the word counseling. What kind of counseling would an SRO be giving to a student and are they trained counselors?
When I say, maybe counseling's a bad word. I was kind of going through experience because a police officer on the street responds to domestics and high stressful situations on a daily basis and are always having to talk to, whether it be a husband and wife or kids, or it's just more of an experience type thing. So when kids come to an SRO in the hallway with, and it happens all the time. They want to talk about what's happening at home and, and what's going on in the street or what's going on with a buddy or, and it's, and maybe counseling's a bad word, but just to be there for the kids and have the experience to talk to, to those kids.
Okay, is, is, does an SRO ever input to the administrator of the, of the building as to discipline?
I'm, I'm not sure of the question. One more time, sir.
There have been instances where SROs said that they had consulted with the principal about the discipline to be awarded to a student because of an incident. Does that happen?
The, 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 does it happen? I, I, I don't know if it happens, but if you're saying you've heard that it's happened, you know, that'll be part of our conversation. I mean, the discipline should follow, uh, our code of conduct and our discipline matrix and that's, and, and, and the principal and assistant principals of the school would be the ones administering the consequences, okay? So if you're saying you've heard it happens, we'll look into it, we'll have that discussion, but, but-
You know, one of the main things that an SRO does along the lens of what you're talking about is they are part of a threat assessment team. And they are part of that team and do make recommendations or, and, and are part of that conversation. But that's just for a threat assessment team.
Mr. Strippinger.
Thank you. I think there's one other important difference between an ASG and an SRO, and that is that the ASGs report to district and the SRO reports to law enforcement. So that, that's something important. It might be important, it might not be important to us, but somehow who you report to and who, who can give you assignments, I think is something we need to take into consideration. Because as you have pointed out prior, law enforcement in the county has a lot of priorities. And if they have a resource shortage, they have to maximize the resources they have. And so if there's an incident somewhere, an SRO may be an available resource. So that's just something that we need to put in that equation.
You know, I just kind of want to go back, just, just so I'm clear on my position on something. When I, when I was comparing the differences, the number one thing I, I talk about with a police officer and, and it's something you guys look forward, look for, look for when you're hiring a superintendent or, um, teachers or a principal, and what is that? Experience. Somebody who's done the job, been successful in the job. So that, that, that was the only point I was making about a police officer as compared to an armed security officer, just so I'm clear on that.
Mr. Earl Campbell.
Uh, yes. As far as SRO counseling the students, I, they do talk to students when they see them doing something wrong and there's a change. As far as, um, hiring SROs, most sheriff department, they're having a problem finding people to come in and to work for them. You know, so that's something we have to, have to look at. And when someone talks about military, if, just because he was in the military, that don't make you a, a qualified to be a, um, a security guard or whatever. But if they serve in law enforcement whilst they was in the military, you have a better chance of getting much more qualified folks.
Ms. Orshak.
When I was visiting schools one day, I had the fortunate or unfortunate opportunity to walk in on a school that was under lockdown and, or just, you know, coming off of the lockdown and I had a chance to see what that convening of the threat assessment team looks like and I won't provide much more information on that, other than to say that at the elementary school level, there is very special training that is provided for, uh, those SROs and it's unique. And I'm very much responding to Mr. Dowling's comments about, um, their input at that level to the principal or they counseling those younger children. And I was pleasantly surprised to learn of the level of training that they have to go through to serve at that particular level with the younger children. I don't know what's required at the older level, but, um, certainly at the elementary level, maybe Dr. Rodriguez.
No, I, I, I was just gonna say, I, it's interesting. We, we, we took his comment from two different angles. I thought he was speaking about just a run-of-the-mill discipline situation at a school versus an engagement in a threat assessment team. So I took it, uh, from two different perspectives. I'm not sure which way he, he meant it, but, okay.
All right. This has been answered.
Okay. I don't know if the board is, is finished with the discussion on this. I just, if at the end, if we are, I, I have just one final comment about it that, that I want to share, so.
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, you're on.
Okay, so I guess my final comment is this, based on the motion that was made last time, uh, by the board and, and was approved and passed, right? That directed the school district to pursue, the administration to pursue it, which we've been doing, and to initially begin with security guards and then phase into SROs. You can see by that plan that that's the way that's designed. That's gonna require me now to move forward and, and put some bids out for security firms. And so absent any other direction from the school board, I just want us to know that we will be moving in that direction next week.
Uh, Dr. Wysniewski.
This is more so just a comment, but I also know that we have the, the grant writer. When I, I would hope that, and it might already be happening, that Mr. Grissom is talking with that company or with you or whoever to make sure that we're going after every federal state and because right now we're getting funding for those two SROs. I believe there's lots of federal funding also that's becoming available, so we'll have to see those.
So, you know, I, I appreciate that comment, uh, because I think it, it sort of opens also the door for another conversation, just to make sure that we are all on the same page around, uh, the grant writer component. So, so any, any grants we could find, ideal, right? On, on, on this, on this front, ideal. Dr. Stratos or Tanya, uh, would you be available to step up here to the microphone so we can have a brief conversation regarding the grant writer? Because I want to make sure we're all clear that, that with that grant writer, when we move forward seeking a grant, that there is a cost to seeking that grant and that, uh, whether we're, whether they're successful in getting that grant or not successful in getting that grant, that cost is still there. If we are, if they are unsuccessful in gaining that grant, right? They will go after it again at no cost. But the initial round has a cost and it, and it, and it may not be a, a $200 cost, okay? It may be a substantial cost for a substantial-sized grant. Can you fill any other details such as if there may be any, uh, once we, once we obtain the grant, if there's any percentage of that, that's also a, a cost after that or not? Please.
You know, I think-
Off topic.
I think we're off topic. I don't think that we can talk about that. So I think, yes.
Fair enough, fair enough. Thank you.
We'll, we'll get it on a-
You're right, you're right.
Any other questions for Mr. Grissom? Okay. We're all, we're really ahead of schedule. I propose that we take like a 15-minute break? Just, is that okay? And then we'll come back. Ms. Orshak?
I, I agree with the 15-minute break. What I was gonna say is you have the ability to change the order of the agenda, uh, you know, residing over the meeting. So if we could pull one of those-
Yes, I, I am going to, after we have our 15-minute break, then maybe we can pull in the Town of Bluffton meeting thing up. Because I, I actually think that Dr. Stratos may need more time for the one right after lunch. But we'll take a 15-minute break. Okay, I'd like to um, get started again. Prior to um, making a change of order on the agenda, I'm requesting um, a motion to do so, please. Okay. So, uh, John moved that we change the, move the Town of Bluffton meeting space to the next item on the agenda and Rachel seconded it. So, all in favor, please raise your hand. Oh, discussion?
Two thirds vote.
Okay, we'll need a two thirds vote. Okay, all in favor? Well, Earl Campbell's absent from the vote. We'll, oh. That two thirds? We need one more? Two thirds?
Voted here.
Yeah. Okay, we got, we're good? Okay, we're, we're good. Okay. Okay. Oh, okay. Um, there's Earl. We just voted on moving uh, one item on the agenda up. Are you in favor of that? Right, so the item we moved up was the uh, discussion or the information regarding the Town of Bluffton meeting space. There's no documents.
There's, there's no documents for it. Um, last week, Molly and I um, went over to the Town of Bluffton as a follow-up of some of your requests of the meeting space. We did go, they are able to accommodate us. Um, their board sets up for seven, but we can move four chairs up and put that up there um, and share their display. Uh, Rob is here to explain how the technology portion of it would work.
So, initially, we had talked to them about bringing one of our devices on to allow us to use Facebook Live to present, since the county has no hook-in to them. Um, they're, they do not want us doing that, just like we would not like them to hook into our network here. However, um, I got a chance, I was able to sit down with the director um, back a few weeks ago and discussed um, this subject and he said that he does not have an issue with us having him creating kind of a generic account, tied-down account on their network and utilizing their device to end up pushing out Facebook Live. What they would be able to do then is provide, at the same time, we'd be able to provide a USB stick. It would stream out to Facebook Live. We'd be able to copy everything down to a USB stick and then present that to the county, so then the county could take and upload that to their website, once, once they go through it and get it all ready. Um, so, it sounds like it's a doable option. Um, I've not seen the quality coming out of Town of Bluffton, but have you, is it audio and everything looks okay? So, it it is an option and it's and it's doable from a technologies perspective.
The only um, downfall as for this calendar year, they can accommodate us um, in June for, they can accommodate us in June and September for our schedule of the third Tuesday of of the month. They suggest that they would be able to accommodate us fully if we were to move our meetings to the third Wednesday of each month. Then they would be able to, we would be able to use our facility. On the third Tuesday of the month, they have meetings, um, between their committee meetings and their sheriff's office. So, looking at their calendar for the rest of this year, we would only be able to meet, like I said, in June and one meeting in September. So, but they said we would be able to use our facility if we were willing to move our meetings to the third Wednesday of each month.
Uh, questions? Mr. Dowling?
How rapid would the transfer of the video be? So, when would the county get it?
So, Molly, actually, I mean, it's, it would be similar to when the county does not hook up here and Molly has provided a USB stick. How long usually is that turnaround, Molly? Okay.
It's usually between twenty-four and forty-eight hours. We send it over to county and then county has to do their editing to get in the format, to get it up onto their website.
Okay, and last question. How is the sound system for those present at the meeting?
That I cannot speak to.
Dr. Wissniewski?
You mean like for the audience to hear? It's, it's really, it's just as good as this, if not better. I mean, they have microphones and everything, they're all mic'd up.
Because they're set up with seven, um, four people would have to share between the screens and the mic.
Ms. Orshak?
I would be open to changing our day. I think it's important for us to have a meeting north and south of the broad each month. But where is it in in Bluffton? Um, where is the location? It's right, right there. So, it's really um, into this part of the county, so that's good. Then um, I would support, I would support moving it to that third Wednesday.
Um, if we're gonna do something like that, I think we would need a motion and then we discuss, correct?
So, I'd like to make a motion um, to direct the um, board's assistant to set up. to set up meetings for the June and September dates for this calendar year at the Bluffton location.
The Ju, it would be June and September. You want those two for this year?
If that's what's available, yeah. I'm just, I'm just trying to get us through this year and then we can revisit.
But, hey. I thought, I'm not allowed to say. I thought, okay, I thought, it hasn't been seconded yet.
I'll second.
Okay. I thought the June and September dates were the ones that it was available on Tuesday.
It is, available on Tuesday for this year.
Okay, so you're, 'cause Joanne had mentioned.
Well, I mean, I would be open to the Wednesdays, but the motion on the floor is for this year. And as I think about it, our schedule has been set, it's been board-approved, that might be more prudent what, what Dr. Wisnewski is proposing.
Anybody else have a comment? I have one more. Okay, I, I agree, I think let's, you know, we could try it for two months and see how it is to share the, the computers or whatever and how much more public we get there perhaps? I mean, that's the payoff, right? We want the public to be there. Tricia?
Just two questions, is there a cost associated with it? And what about the, would there be a decrease in cost that we owe the county channels since we would not be using them?
No, there's not a cost associated. County still, we're not using the facility, but the county is still doing our, we would provide them a flash drive for them to convert and do the other parts from Granicus. So, I don't know that the cost for that would go down. But there is not a cost to use a facility because it's county-owned.
Ms. Orshak?
It's still part of the county.
So, what happened with the Hilton Head Library? What was the deterrent there, why we're not alternating, using that facility?
We are, we are starting in March. We, Hilton Head Library, as I indicated on this calen, calendar, they weren't available for us January and February.
January, February.
But our next meeting in, our second meeting in March, throughout the rest of the year, we are at Hilton Head Library.
Okay, I just had some folks asking and I wasn't sure, thank you.
Right, the, the two dates weren't available when we proposed the calendar.
Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. The motion is, I move that we set up our meetings for June and September at the Bluffton site. What's the name of the site?
The Bluffton Town Hall.
At the Bluffton Town Hall. So, that's the motion on the floor. Made by Ms., Dr. Wisnewski, seconded by Joanne Orshak. All in favor, please raise your hands. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? We don't have William on the phone anymore, do we? Okay, so it passes unanimously.
Right.
So, next on our agenda is Lynn Stokes Murray and Shannon. Are they still? Thought I saw them earlier. Of Robbins. Thank you, ladies. Thanks for accommodating us and starting a bit early.
Oh, no, thank y'all. Traffic was really hectic or we would have been here a little bit earlier. Okay. Catch my breath. Just those reports is all I was gonna get out. I think they.
Did they already have them?
Y'all, we sent elec, they have what we sent electronically? Well, what I was gonna do, if it, if it pleases the council, was just give y'all kind of an overview or report of where we are, what's happening, that, what we know in the budget, what's going on on the education reform bill. And then Shannon and I were gonna make ourselves available for questions that you all may have. And then other things that y'all might wanna walk us through in terms of what is on your agenda. Since we haven't, since we got engaged on the nineteenth, we really haven't had a, gotten back feedback for what all y'all want us to make sure we covered. So, let me just tell you, in your packet, you did get this tracking document that's on the slide now. And that is everything from the last session and this session that we pulled that we thought might be of interest. It is a massive document and there's probably things on there that you all may not have interest in. So, if, at some point along the way, if y'all would take a look at that and maybe we can get it cleaned up so it won't be so voluminous, that would probably be really helpful. The other thing we sent you was a spreadsheet for the budget that was passed by Ways and Means last week. And along with that, we sent you copies of all the provisos related to K through twelve education. So, that's the spreadsheet. And then, the next thing after that should be the provisos. Yep, so you've got everything that's pending, so y'all should take a look at those and make sure that you're comfortable with all of that information. And if you have any questions or concerns, you know, just let us know. Any questions about any of that material that we sent? Okay. Let me reintroduce myself, I'm Lynn Murray with Burfiman McNair, Director of Government Relations at the firm. And this is my partner Shannon Bruning. We will be registered for you all to lobby on the course of this year and are really looking forward to working with you all and achieving and accomplishing your goals for the 2020 legislative session. I'll tell you that it's turning out to be a great deal of debate on K through twelve. We are starting week eight, next week of session. And every single one of those weeks, the South Carolina Senate has been in debate on the education reform bill. As you know, they, they, they did not take up the House-passed bill, which is probably a good thing, 'cause it has a lot of issues in it that we've heard from everywhere around the community, from administrators, teachers and everybody. So, they started fresh with four nineteen and we are debating that bill now. And I'll get into that in just a minute. I wanted to kinda recap and Tonya, you probably did a bunch of this already this morning, but the, talk a little bit about what the governor proposed and where we are in Ways and Means. The governor proposed two hundred and thirteen million for a three thousand dollar across-the-board pay increase for the teachers, fifty-two point seven million dollars for full 4K, twenty-seven or twenty-one million for base student costs. And I've got copies of my presentation, which I'll leave with y'all. Seventy million for new instructional materials, forty-seven million for school bus and Leaks purchases. That would bring the fleet up to date. That's not exactly what happened on the Ways and Means side. Almost twenty-five million for school resource officers and mental health counselors, one point two million for computer science, twenty-six million for tuition mitigation, a hundred and sixty-two million from capital reserve fund for maintenance at higher ed and fifty-two million for, from the lottery for needs-based grants, all that's higher ed. The educations proposals have been well-received and the budget process has begun. As I mentioned, the full Ways and Means Committee did vote on their bill last week and we will debate it not next week, but the week of the ninth on the floor. So, in that bill, they increased teacher salaries by three thousand dollars. They gave two hundred and thirteen million for teacher pay raises that, that accomplishes that three thousand dollar per teacher raise. They funded four-day-year-old kindergarten and they increased the base student cost to twenty-five hundred dollars, which I think is eleven dollar increase from what y'all saw last year. And they put ten million dollars on the line for resource officers. Now, the resource officers will be an opportunity to hire these certified law enforcement officers for districts without adequate resources. So, I think they're calculating in the proviso that that'll be attached to the, the ITA. And that probably will mean that y'all will not be on the top of the list for those resources. But we do think that the Senate will add more to the line and we may see that proviso change. So, be interested to know from you all what you need and how that would, could, you know, appropriately, helpfully, hopefully, help y'all. These provisions for the school resource officers include the statewide public charter school district and the charter schools that are authorized by the higher ed institutions. So, they're included in, in that calculation as well, which me, seems to me that we've got to get that ten million dollars raised in order for us to see more folks on the line in, in all areas of the state, just not in the need areas. As I mentioned, the House passed last year thirty-seven fifty-nine, which is the Speaker Lucas bill on K through twelve reform. That bill went through lengthy deliberations on the House side. It came over to the Senate side and they stuck it in a drawer and started over on Senate Bill four nineteen, which as I said earlier, has been under debate since we started session. And we're into week eight, I think. Yesterday, lots going on. We have had, to date, over three hundred floor amendments. But on Wednesday of this week, the Senate voted cloture on the bill. So, that means now that debate is limited, that there can be no more amendments put on the desk unless they have unanimous consent of the Senate. Bunch of amendments were withdrawn. Senator Mike Fanning has been really leading the charge on the amendments. And he pulled down probably a hundred amendments yesterday. So, when I left yesterday afternoon, we were down to maybe seventy amendments that are left on the desk. Each one can be debated for ten minutes and then they have to take a vote on it, up or down, or it can be withdrawn. And then what happens after, once we get through all the amendments, then there's a limited amount of time, pro and con, for the debate of the bill. Once the, you know, once we get through this amendment process, we can go back and do a full-blown analysis of the bill and what's gonna happen. It's kinda hard, 'cause it's so fluid right now. But let me just tell you some of the things that we do know. And one of the biggest things is the Senate voted yesterday forty-one, forty to one for full four-year-old kindergarten. I think that's huge and impressive. The, the House, as I mentioned, in their budget has included additional funding for, for full, uh, four-year-old kindergarten, but not for everybody. The Senate said if we're gonna do it, we might as well just do it across the board. So, my feeling on that is that when the Senate takes up the budget, that they'll track that, pick up that cost in the, you know, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget fiscal year and they'll fully fund four-year-old kindergarten. And that tracks right along with what the governor recommended as well. So, when we get in conference committee and our- Um, so when we get in conference committee and are arguing about money, um, we'll see how that turns out. But my guess is that with the governor and the Senate being fully supportive, the House will probably come around that way too. So that's a remarkably great thing that happened yesterday. Um, Senator Davis has had, um, some significant amendments to the bill. He, um, wanted to add a teacher bill of rights, which I know in the past has been something that was really important to, um, to the school board. Um, the House bill contained a bill of rights, but it had no legal authority, um, to sue the district if one, if any of the legal rights were violated. So Senator Davis's amendment added that legal right of a teacher to bring an action if they believed their rights were violated. Um, a lot of the senators expressed concern about that, and it would prompt more litigation, so they rejected the amendment and passed an amendment that provided for seven items under the teacher bill of rights, but it would not allow ground for legal action. So we need to make sure we take a look at that language and see how that works for you all, and if we need to tweak it along the way. Um, an amendment was adopted that a resident student of a college in South Carolina who's at least a sophomore and majoring in education can receive an additional twenty-five hundred dollars for life scholarship and three thousand dollars in Palmetto Fellas. Um, another amendment was adopted that student data information be collected, uh, as confidential and personal and be maintained in accordance with our privacy laws. An amendment was adopted to delete a section of the bill, um, according to the Department of Education, providing certain information to each college of education regarding their graduates. An amendment was adopted to provide the local school district, um, Board of Trustees shall adopt a streamlined template for classroom teachers to use when preparing student learning objectives, and any data required on that template is not specifically related to the teacher, direct interaction with the student, and must be provided by the district office. An amendment was adopted to allow the school district Board of Trustees to establish the opening date for students. I'm sure y'all are happy to hear that. Um, the amendment also, um, increases the statutory school term from a hundred and ninety days to a hundred and ninety-five days.
I have a, a question on the start date. Is that the August fifteenth date? So, in effect, on the Aug- August fifteenth date, it, it wouldn't really have an effect, uh, for about three or four years, 'cause the August fifteenth date falls on a weekend for...
Instead of a Monday, right?
Yes. So it doesn't, so, so, so I guess that compromise isn't really, uh, the impact on start date that we have in mind, right?
And I'll tell you...
We still have to move forward with the way...
That piece of the bill is still very fluid. Ori County and all of the entities of Ori County that have been driving this debate for as long as I can remember are still lobbying very hard for it to be the mandatory third Monday in August. Um, the, you know, we, God, we spent probably ten days on that, um, debate. It's insane. Um, but, but they have, what happened that this amendment passed, just as an aside, which is kind of a funny story, Senator Rankin just happened to not be in the chamber, and they realized that he wasn't in the chamber, and they put the amendment up and they adopted it. Um, so, I, I think that we'll come back to this. I'm not sure that this issue's settled yet, but...
And in fact, he was actually the one dissenting vote, um, yesterday on the amendment for the four K.
For four K. Um, so let's see what else we've got. Um, an amendment was adopted for the department to adopt a policy that each school board must implement a plan that directs the principal of each elementary school to provide thirty minutes of duty-free time on each regular school day for all full-time teachers. An amendment adopted for any person hired to serve for the first time as a principal or an assistant principal must participate and successfully complete an induction program facilitated by, facilitated by the State Department. Um, another relating to the steps and voting requirements of a local school district has to meet in creating a school of innovation. Um, two public school students, um, will serve as advisory members to the State Board of Education, and that no person could serve more than three years on that board. Um, an amendment adopted to require the State Board of Education to annually publish reports detailing the revenues each school district receives from state, local, and federal sources. Um, an amendment, um, that provides that coaching is not an extracurricular activity was adopted. Um, documentation of reading and writing assessment instruction was planned for all, um, K through twelve students. Um, another was when a waiver of retention is granted to a student who can't read at grade level, that the academic performance of the student in the fourth grade may not be a factor in the performance evaluation of his fourth-grade teacher. Um, an additional amendment adopted to set forth a process for a parent to appeal that decision, um, to retain a student who can't read at grade level. Other amendments, um, required the superintendent to annually submit a report for the academic year, completed, um, relating to the appeals made and the number of retention exemptions granted, along with information on the academic outcome of the student. Um, provides another that provides every school district may establish a mandatory program for each school in the district addressing, um, bullying. Uh, another that the State Department of Education must pay for fees and costs associated with first-time teacher certification, not to exceed five hundred dollars. And the amendment also provides for teachers to receive a reimbursement of five hundred and fifty dollars each year to offset expenses for teachers' supplies and materials. Um, now, that, that's kind of a quick blush of what's been amended to the bill. It's truly fluid. Um, I think we'll probably finish debate next week, um, and I think we may get a vote on the full bill on, on Thursday. Here's a couple things that are going on, and the rumor mill is rampant, so I'll give you what I know. Um, a huge rumor is that they're gonna recommit the bill to education, and they're gonna go back and pick three or four things that they feel like they have agreement on, and put those in separate bills, and report those back out to the floor, and try to get that passed and over to the House. Um, the, the other, um, rumor is that there is a huge compromise amendment coming. And remember when I told you that, um, cloture was invoked? And that the only way that we can do that is if we have unanimous consent of everybody in the Senate to put it on the desk and take it up? That's tall order. It happens a lot, so it may happen. I, no way to know. Um, but that's kinda where we are. Um, and again, Senator Shaheen championed the amendment, um, on, on four K, and that winning forty-two-one, if they do send the bill back and recommit it, I mean, I would think that would be one of the first things that they put in a separate piece of legislation and report it back out. Um, so, a lot of, a lot of fluidness to it all, um, but at least you have some idea of kinda where we are. Um, and I've captured it in this document, and I'll give this to y'all for, for your study and review. Um, did you talk about school bus money? Yeah, it's there. It's about, it's about twenty-two million. It's in a couple of places in the budget. Um, there's some money, um, on the line under the education section, and then there's some money in the lottery funds for school bus purchases. What they typically do is any unclaimed prize money in the lottery is all dedicated to school bus purchases or leases. Um, so we're getting close to, to being back up to where we need to be on replacing, um, these buses. All the buses that they were having trouble with, that were catching on fire, have all been replaced. So now it's just a fleet management issue, just trying to catch back up on making sure that, that we don't, aren't driving around twenty-year-old buses for these children. Um, school resource officers, we talked about, I think we'll pick up some more money on the Senate side, which hopefully will help you all, um, because y'all will not be first on the list for that, that money. Um, am I forgetting anything? Yeah, um, the Volkswagen insurance money, I think I mentioned that, y'all, when I came, um, last time. Um, we're still, you know, waiting for the Department of Insurance to finalize how they're going to, to issue those funds. Um, they have said that they want to be able to use smart buses. Um, they're saying that diesel can be counted as a smart bus, not just electric, which is interesting. Um, but we haven't seen those, those allocations of dollars released yet. But, um, we do anticipate that coming in this fiscal year, and probably within the next, next quarter, I would think. So I'll stop there and see if y'all have questions.
Doctor Wetzneski.
One question about one of the bills. It's the SB one twenty-seven, the School Transportation Revision Bill. It doesn't look like there's been much movement on it recently, so I just wanted to ask, 'cause it looks like they're changing the, um, the distance from a school from one and a half miles to half miles.
They haven't even taken it up, and, and at this point, I kinda doubt that they...
Yeah, that's...
That they will.
'Cause I knew that could impact some of our, our system, our transportation.
Yeah, we've talked about that for probably like the last three years or so, and there seems to be a lot of controversy around doing that, just because of the expense, the added expense to the districts.
Thank you.
Sure. Wow.
Uh, Doctor, um, Mr. Strivinger, would you like to pose that question we talked about earlier? Can I put you on the spot? About what we ask. I, I'll try. I'll try. Okay. So, because of our tax label, and I can't, it's a three-letter thing. What is it? Not T...
Tax...
A-T-I? I-T-A, okay.
Index of taxpayer ability.
Because of that, we, Beaufort County doesn't receive the level of funding that we think we should have, because we have a high level of poverty in our county. So, um, one of the things, like, the, um, SRO, she said we probably wouldn't see any of that unless it gets, um, bumped up. So what do we need to ask for? What do we need you to advocate for us so that we get seen as, uh, a county that does have a lot of need, um, because of our poverty level?
Um, what we did several years ago, back when we first started this venture together, um, you all were receiving no funds in the Education Finance Act. So we, we tried to change the formula with our fellow districts that are similarly situated. And those are typically those on the coast, so Charleston, Ori. Um, and then, and then you look at the other fast-growing areas, which are Lexington and York. Um, and, you know, there are winners and losers when you change formula funding, right? So that, that always makes it a very difficult sell. So what we did is we put, um, Senator Davis put a proviso in the budget, which, which changes the ITA and allows for you all to get more funding than you would have. Um, whether or not this education reform bill passes and we deal with those disparities in numbers will be huge, and, um, we're tuned into that, because, you know, while you look wealthy, you've got so much in the district that, that is not wealthy, and it's a perception issue with a lot of folks. And I think Senator Davis has done a really good job in the Senate trying to explain that difference in Beaufort County. I mean, it's not, you know, not everybody has everything, and we've got plenty of areas that, that are without. Um, so we continue to make that argument, and however we might can tweak that proviso, we will continue to do that. So that's at the top of, of Senator Davis's list and ours, to make sure that we can at least get you as much as, as the ITA will allow. And, and finagle with that formula as much as we can, um, without wreaking too much havoc with...
So is it looking at, uh, or considering taking into consideration, uh, brand reduced lunch, or, or the poverty index?
Um, you know what? I, I need to go back and look at that. I don't wanna tell you anything wrong. Seems like that's correct, but I don't want, I don't wanna tell you anything wrong. I've got the budget with me. I can look real quick.
Mr. Campbell?
Couldn't you suggest to the late slaters that student-based cost should be equal for all students in the state of South Carolina, instead of one district at eleven dollars and the other one get the full amount?
Yeah. I mean, we talked about that with some educators yesterday, um, from the department, and, and, you know, they said, you know, eleven dollars really, really doesn't accurately reflect it, because some districts are, are getting, you know, more than twenty-five hundred, and some are getting less. Um, and it's just, the, the whole funding formula is flawed. And all that goes back to Act three eighty-eight. Y'all know that. Um, and what do we do about that? I, I can't see there being any stomach for changes to Act three eighty-eight in an election year where the House and the Senate are up. But, Mr. Campbell, you are absolutely right. I mean, that's something that we've got to continue to push forward on, so that there's equity for everybody.
Ms. Vidrich?
Can you go back and, uh, talk a little bit about, uh, you mentioned a, um, teacher contract year of a hundred and ninety-five days?
Yes.
Did you reference that? And then also, um, an additional three thousand dollars per teacher? Is that to compensate for those extra five days, or is, can you just talk a bit more about that?
I, I'll tell you what I know. The, the three thousand dollars is for the across-the-board, um, pay raise for teachers. And then one of the amendments that they adopted, whether it stays in the final version of the bill, would be to increase from a hundred and ninety to a hundred and ninety-five days. So my guess is that that may or may not, um, cover the cost of that. It probably goes in another one of those unfunded mandate categories.
So it doesn't mean then that the, it mean, doesn't mean that they will fund the extra five days and as well as have the three thousand dollar increase?
Right.
It does not mean that.
That's exactly right. And we had, like we said, we haven't seen the, the budget on the floor of the House yet. And my guess is the House won't pick up any of this language from the Senate bill. So that'll probably be something that we'll see picked up over on the Senate side, if they ultimately adopt it. Does that make sense?
Uh, no, I need a civics course, um, to really understand how it goes back and forth, and I, that's my hope.
Well, we'll do that offline anytime, um, y'all want us to go through Legislative one oh one. We'd be happy to do that for y'all.
Doctor Rodriguez?
Is there, um, any, any particular legislation or bill or amendment that looks at increasing the funding for English-language learners? Uh, so some districts have a larger, uh, portion of English-language learners than others. And, and so I'm curious if there's anything there, anywhere, that we might see an increase in funding to support, uh, the education of English-language learners?
I have, I have heard, um, Senator Fanning talk about that a lot, and I know he had an amendment that would address that. Um, I don't remember off the top of my head whether they've gotten to it yet. Um, but it is definitely, it has been something that he's talked about a lot.
And he's pulled, like we said, a hundred amendments down, and we don't know what those hundred are, and we don't know what eighty or so are left, so we, we, we haven't seen those, so we don't know what makes, but...
We're not privy to the, to those amendments until they become published, is what they call it, when they're read across the desk. Um, so, you know, we're at the mercy of, of everybody else in trying to see what else is left. Um, but we'll go back on Tuesday and ask him specifically about that, 'cause we've had several conversations. Um, I know that's something that he's really concerned about.
Okay.
Um, you also mentioned, oh, I'm, okay, out, William, you can go.
I have anyone asking about the, about the Bill four nineteen, uh, in reference to a lot of school boards, we are, we are against that. Are, are y'all familiar with that?
I'm sorry, I, he's talking about the reform bill, and he's talking, and I didn't hear what the issue...
Uh, can you repeat that, William?
Right, the, the reform bill, uh, four nineteen, Bill four nineteen, are y'all familiar, familiar with that? There's a pretty large bill right now that they're talking about?
Yes, sir. That's what we were just going through, talking about, um, the amendments that have been adopted and kinda where we are on the status of that. Was there something in particular that you wanted us to address on four nineteen?
Uh, no, uh, I, I actually, well, I apologize for my tardiness, but I, would you definitely, is there a copy there about what you have, what you have addressed?
Yes, sir. We, we have provided you with a document that gives a summary of where we are to date. Um, and, and what you may not have heard me say is that we're still very fluid in the debate. Um, the debate will continue next week, and we've got about eighty... Um, and we've got about eighty amendments left on the desk that are to be discussed. But we have given you a summary document of what we know that has been adopted so far. Um, and, and I've left that here, a hard copy, and, um, I'll make sure Robin has an electronic copy as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Also, um, is, is, is there any funding at that state level for, for probably after school, after school care? Is that, that something that we can look into?
We haven't heard much about after-school care. Happy to investigate that for you if you would like.
Uh, I, I definitely would like, would like that, um, uh, because we definitely would, could use some, uh, after-school tutoring care for these, for these students because a lot of these students, sometimes they go home and I think if they can stay after school, we get a little additional, additional help and maybe nutrition. I think that, that was, that would be very feasible for the students to help us move, uh, closer, uh, to a closed achievement gap.
Okay.
In terms of that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Vidrich?
When you were going through the litany of, of amendments and so on, you mentioned the SLOs. And so, um, can you, did I hear you correctly, because I was trying to write a few things down, that the indep, the individual school districts will then create their own template for the SLO? And is this in response to the paperwork reduction concern for, for teachers? Can you just speak a little bit more about that?
I don't know that I can tell you much more than that, I can get you a copy of the actual amendment. Would that be helpful? Okay, we'll do that.
Um, and I'm gonna like piggyback on Dr. Rodriguez's question about ELL. Has there been any, um, discussion about, uh, additional funding? We're not close to fully funded special ed.
Yes, there was a, a lot of conversation around that in the Ways and Means Committee. Um, and there's a little bit of money on the line. I'll have to look at the spreadsheet and tell you exactly how much. But, um, yeah, I suspect we'll talk a lot more about that on the Senate side as well. That, that, we've got a couple of senators who are really passionate about that issue. And so my guess is we'll see more of that coming on the Senate side.
Dr. Witzneski? This is probably a question for Frank, but do, does the team at McNair, do they have, um, a breakdown of our demographics relative to how many ELL students we're serving and whatnot so that when they are having these conversations?
We'll get it for you.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I think that would be beneficial for you guys.
That would be very helpful. And again, I mean, as you all have made your priorities if, for this legislative session, if y'all can share those with us, that would be very helpful to us as well. Thank you very much for the opportunity to work with you and we view it as a partnership. And, um, we are available. I think we're probably inundating, um, Wendy and Robin with paper. But hopefully you're getting what you need. If you're not, let us know, we'll be glad to provide anything we can. The one thing I did want to say in, in the contract that we signed, you all had asked us to plan to be here, um, once a month on Tuesdays. It's really difficult for us when we're in session. So we've offered to do, uh, a video conference or call-in, or we're happy to come to your work sessions. I don't know how often, if y'all do these once a month. Happy to drive down, what, however works best for you, we're certainly willing to, to make the effort and be here and, um, you know, just, we can't physically be here on Tuesday nights.
Got it. Um, if, very quickly, if it's okay with the board, I would like to tell you what our legislative priorities are.
That would be awesome.
Robin can get them to you. I'm, I'm surprised, I apologize that we, you don't have them. Uh, one was school start date. You know, we're pretty adamant about that. There's a big connection for us in terms of, um, educational achievement and balancing our semesters so that we can have the ninety day.
May I ask, do y'all test before the holiday break or you test after?
Test before.
Okay.
But our calendar is determined every year, the board, and that's always a discussion point for us. I've only been on the board one year, but it is, um, something that is, is discussed. Also, teacher salaries. You know, we believe that teachers are professionals and should be compensated as such. Um, the third thing was fully funded state mandates. So that, ELL, special ed, when a mandate comes down and you're telling us we have to do this, give us the money. SRO and mental health initiatives, that's one of our priorities.
And sounds like we, we've, we're on the path to that. We're probably not exactly where you all want to be, but at least we're making strides.
Added, uh, education funding reform? You know, when changes do happen in educational funding, if they happen, uh, we need to be held harmless. We can't take the, uh, a downfall, we can't, that, that.
And we've talked about that, and I don't mean to interrupt, but we, we have talked about that a lot. And if, if we do accomplish and achieve some sort of education funding reform, there's going to have to be a period of time for those districts that are impacted to be held harmless and, and till we can make it whole. So that's very much on the radar.
And then our last item was, um, pre-K.
Oh, good, yay.
Pre-K for all. And if I could just ask a question about that? You said it's been, it was forty-one?
Forty, voted for, one against.
So is that going to be one of those unfunded mandates?
No, they will fund it. They will fund it.
Okay. Dr. Rodriguez?
So, you know, the board shared, uh, the legislative priorities with you and, and I think it's written in there. But in, in the conversation, I think I just, wanna just highlight and echo the, the, the mandates with funding, that some of them require recurring funding. And that's an important piece. Let's not just get the startup dollars to get going because then we're still on the hook for it, right? So we have to figure out how to.
You gotta have it in the base.
Yes, yes.
Okay, great, well, thank y'all for sharing that and, um, Robin, if you don't mind shooting us a copy, that'd be terrific.
I just wanted to say thank you for coming down here, I know y'all are super busy right now.
Oh, well, thank you, you're very kind. We're delighted to be here and we really do look forward to working with you all and thank you for this opportunity. And, um, you know, we want to do what's best for our children and, um, we gotta work together to make that accomplishment. Thank y'all.
Oh, wait, we have one more question, sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, I should be reminded by my mystery question, but I was also wondering, uh, early, early hood, early childhoods education. Uh, can we also, we would like to keep up with that too because, uh, we would like to look for funding for that as well.
We, we just talked about that, William.
No, 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 I, I heard you said pre-K.
Oh, early childhood.
Zero to five.
Birth, birth to three?
Yeah.
Okay.
Got it. Great, thank you.
We, we're gonna break for lunch, lunch isn't quite ready yet. As soon as it is, um, I suggest that we partake in lunch and then we can, I know Mary, Dr. Stratos, would be willing to start before 1:15. So perhaps we could, um, start at one?
I didn't ask him to go to pension later.
Yeah, we did.
My old uh college advisor advisor taught one too. She did course in Charlotte and Charlotte is the first that I'm offering this into the year. Except it's not actually.
Mine's not good because mine was an older one. It's a qualify.
Yeah. Yeah, it's. Yeah. We just got the rollerball.
Oh yeah.
From the school.
Which one?
For about their dark make it go remember.
Oh yeah, the Rimbri.
How many students do they have? I mean, if you know, there's not even a lot of classes in the middle. They're very few. In the upper manor story, the lower manor story is our fourth graders are still up. I I know my daughter's class is holding class something but but Glenn's class, lower manor story, they're high and the fourth graders aren't. My knowledge. That would be great for fourth graders. They must be younger. If they would have six classroom students. There's only two lower manors. They should. We can't leave them here. Um, but.
So the.
Only there's a lot of kids.
Yeah. Yep. It's an adventure.
Well, it'll be, I mean, don't don't have it fixed by Monday. Um.
It's got the smell.
Lunch is ready for you all. I am really like I'm doing my job job and then quickly. So so what is the job now? Um, traveling. Uh. Yeah. Or get four chairs. Like. You cannot. And I'm starting with me. But I mean.
Cherry.
And and then. Is that.
Other than.
That would make sense.
It's like.
After. Do both. Yeah.
What did you bring?
Cause I I forgot to bring in my phone charger. I do have the computer one on.
Can you not up up the.
Yeah. Yeah, that's okay. My phones do it okay. My computer does not.
But she's got one. I thought she said she I thought you were saying you got in the car.
No, I'm gonna get the um the extension. So thank you.
Rachel, man, you're fast.
Like lightning.
Ah, you are.
Decide if they don't know what they're. Yeah, I know. That's what. Yeah. If they wanna go in the tall, there's some like. Whatever it is. Right. Right. Yeah. Well, and he was in the Monday. He's responsible for the. I'm saying. Well, that's one of the additions. Yeah, the guy who was down because he had a teacher work really.
Was it extended?
But it was right after. It's been a short hour. But she said to me like, I said, you can gather and just take off and work Friday. Friday. And she said they don't have any back office special people to take off Friday before a long. To add on your Monday venue especially. To. Right?
Don't be afraid of that.
Really? Yeah. I think some of it is. Yeah. Right. Yeah. And she said, I think she was in here. Yeah. We tried to do.
It's not David. He's in seventy.
I'm not gonna. Somebody was using one. Someone on that. But um here. Yeah. So remember. She's been using her digital library to. Helping her to write about it, but she doesn't want to be named, which makes sense. I do.
Oh yeah. There's some of them. Oh. And these.
One of her. Not be allowed to say.
Rachel just can't see it when you hold it out like that. Yeah, worship. Woman. Try to help. Waste the money to state to try to make it seem this is serious. She gets.
Well, they closed up. So now that that's.
So they don't like. Who's the favorite?
To get them off the ship. So when they sent people to meet services to meet that, that those folks already landed at their own place and to, you know, um, get them set up. I'm not sure at what point I should start personally thinking about this stuff.
Is your yes, is your mass?
Yeah.
All right. How do you do it?
Yeah. But then when I Get people out too It doesn't That I don't know. She was really not Something like that. Like she gave you Her best And you get pockets where it's like Lots of Yes. Yeah.
You don't feel that.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Now I don't know how to pay that.
I don't think
No. You know.
Sure.
We all know One year We're Very Very So Here Yeah. 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 Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Be loud. Be loud. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
I think Yeah.
Yeah. I hope Just a little In the past Are you ready? Yeah. We're gonna We're here collecting all this stuff. All this
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
She's 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 Yeah. She's She's
Yeah. 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 Cautious. Cautious. Virus.
I mean I didn't hear That It's just It's highly Just One of the things Is It's In the Time To To Respect It's It's I don't Do 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 What It's It's
Oh. This
It's more like the same thing. She's
Yeah.
She's She's
She actually Those She She Yeah, that's uh It's So Yeah.
I have
Mm-hmm. Mm.
It's
Yeah. I Don't I'm 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 We didn't get that There's We didn't get that There's There's Yeah.
Six Oh, it's It's Chop Sucking it down. Yeah.
I don't agree with that.
Yeah, but still. Especially when people You know, yes. The girl You Ten. But uh She was just like Could Cause And then things were It's Uh So I sit for the pool And Well I Play
I Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Oh yeah.
... I'm not directing at all.
I'm a free bird. How are you on this fine Friday, John? How are you on this Friday?
Oh, with a relaxed feeling going on and fine.
Yeah.
No, 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 no stress.
Yes, I can't say that too.
I was wondering why.
Yeah, yeah. Take a shot. Let's see what, go over there, go over there, do something. And see how that turns out for you. Let's test your hypothesis.
Okay, Dr. Stratus, thank you so much for your flexibility with your time. And thank you fellow board members. I know we had a lot of downtime today. We, thank you for your cooperation with our agenda.
I appreciate it. This is probably the hardest slide, um, spot to have because everyone now has already had lunch. Right, so you're doing the afternoon slide. I understand that, but we're gonna go. I, I have one coming, I promise. Okay, I'm gonna give you the opportunity for some adult learning and we'll do a video later on. So I am honored, once again, thank you for being able to be in front of you. This is, I will try not to take a lot of time, but this is a combination of a few presentations. It has information regarding our demographics, information regarding our strategic plan, as well as instructional initiatives. I'm hoping that you've been able to access to Google Doc links that I've sent to you. I'll work a better way in the future. Hopefully I'll be able to set this up next time that I have it right in front of me. So I don't have to be pulling the assistance of the young lady, Ms. Molly. So I'll work out those kinks. So again, thank you for this opportunity. We're gonna go forward with ISD 2020. Well, all yours, Ms. Molly. Click it over. So the first thing would be really sick. Can you put that on presentation? Let's download this if possible. Go to the very top se, well, yeah, go ahead. If you go right into the center and open it in Google Docs, it would have been easier, it would link right in for me. Excuse me one moment.
You know, it's on PowerPoint.
Can we go back out and do the Google Doc? It might be easier to read it. Right up in the center at the centerpiece. Look right there, thank you. Hit percent. Appreciate it. Now it's gonna load. Sometimes my creative ideas are little more than the technology is to catch up or I have to adapt myself backwards and I'm learning. So we can go to the next slide, Ms. Molly. So I'll, I'll give you a nod if that's how we could work, she's not operating. Thank you. Mr. Campbell, that was for you because it is a realization that us as a school system, we need to be able to work together with regard to all our groupings with regard to design of what we do as a system in the benefit of our children. This is just a brief reminder of our school district's vision and mission statement. I won't go through reading it. If you want to take a moment to peruse, thank you, core beliefs. If you can go to next slide, thank you. So this is where we started taking a little closer conversation. We are a school system of twenty-two thousand four hundred and five students. We are the tenth largest in the state. You had discussion earlier today regarding our size and poverty and also ESOL was a conversation that came up. And I'll point a few things out in this presentation. Student population, this is work that Mr. Jim Foster put together in his shop. I was able to borrow it through his shop to populate into my presentation. Gets a distribution of our demographics.
That's a shift over, I believe, uh,
Ten years, ten years. To the left would be ten years ago. This is not a demographic reflection of the county's population. It is our school system. This is showing the top twenty largest districts in the state of South Carolina. Where we, where do we rank? Again, by size. And now let's have a conversation with regard to the size of our language learners here in the county because as we're making instructional decisions and budgetary decisions, we need to take into consideration that the state requires a sixty-to-one ratio of language learning students to teacher, but it is not a fully funded initiative. This gives us a little distribution review by state, comparison to other counties. And our rating with regard to other comparative groups. Our language learning population is actually larger than that of our sped population at this time here in the county. This is the distribution by schools. And during our budgetary, if we can go back one, during our budgetary process, we have looked at what it would look like to meet the requirement of the sixty-to-one and what we could do to improve our staffing for our language learners. That is already a lens of consideration that's happening here, here in the district building. Review of our population of students with disabilities. Now I cross-check the math. Just on an FYI, the percentages, I wanted to make sure. Yes, sir. This gets a distribution. I want you to also recognize that right now, Dr. White in our division is working hard at revisiting our student with disabilities programs in order to spread the opportunity of services more on both sides of the river, but also within, within each school. And not to have a disproportionate setup in one school in comparison to another. And the ultimate goal is to try our hardest to service our children within their school communities. Poverty index. There was conversation in here earlier today with regard to funding from the state and it is a question and that I believe Mr. Campbell brought it forward earlier today that we as a group, we need to reach out to our legislators. And the why is, if we look at our district, you could see, you know, it almost reminds you a little bit of Italy because if you think of a shoe, but our northern point, part of our county actually falls into what is defined by some who call it a corridor of shame. I call it a court of opportunity. But yet, the state doesn't give us awaited funding to meet the needs of children of poverty. And I think that's critical. We're missing opportunities to meet the needs of kids by not standing up for that voice. If you can go forward, please. Free reduced lunch in comparison. I have now, this is to me is a pause, let's stop and think. If our free and reduced lunch numbers are going down, but technically our students who qualify for McKinney-Vintas going up, are we really getting to everyone? What is the climate that's being set right now? Are we really meeting the, you know, the needs of kids whose voices are really not being heard? That's kind of how I, I read this slide and I read the numbers. This is a distribution of, um, schools here in Beaufort County who are above the This is the distribution of, um, schools here in Beaufort County who are above the state poverty index. We have thirty-two schools that we service. This is a listing of schools that are actually above the state's poverty average. Now if you look at the distribution of the schools within our county. And I think it's conscious that we look at this because as we're looking at initiatives in our county, are we looking at how we're servicing the needs of kids? So, from looking at data for the past six months and even prior to that, one of the things that we did when I first arrived and Dr. Rodriguez already started on this path was Listen and Learns. He took the opportunity of listening and learning from the community. We took all that information and it was five hundred and twelve members who were involved in the Listen and Learns. I think it's important to recognize because as we go forward at looking at our strategic plan, right, forming a plan of action, it's, we need to be able to recognize how many voices came forward and five hundred and twelve is significant. Input came forward. We took all the information together to codify it into the six themes put forward by the state that are required to make a strategic plan. So I gave you a little coding. And if you look at the bullets, those are the most highest resonant themes that came forward from all, all our Listen and Learns that were conducted in August, September, and October. The state requires technically four areas, but I'm gonna drive us into three of them as we go through this presentation because one, one of them I'm actually embedding into, into student achievement. The four areas required on themes are student achievement, administrative teacher quality, climate, and gifted and talented. As I've shared with you once before, board members, when we're looking at servicing children, we not only want to meet our kids here, we want to be able to address our children in the middle, as well as our children from the midpoint of the bell curve forward. So when I'm thinking student achievement, I'm putting right now for this presentation purposes, all our kids together. So we take a look at the student achievement slide. These are basically the two theme requirement on the left is from the state. Two themes that came from our Listen and Learns are right in the middle. And I started listening, listing from our proposed student, um, meetings as well as putting together our strategic plans activities that we're looking at. Actions that came out. And actually, these actually came out from our Listen and Learns. So this is student achievement. Looking at, looking at early childhood. One of the recommendations coming forward is a standard curriculum for early childhood and kindergarten in the areas of math and literacy. So, and you'll, you'll see a little bit of that as we go forward. Molly? The need for administrative and teacher quality. We also have started having conversations with our local universities on how to improve this as well as recommendations put forward from yourselves and Dr. Rodriguez on the idea of growing our own teachers. What can we do to help develop the skill set and give opportunities for the, what we refer to as classified personnel, to help them become educators and teachers, growing our own? Climate. This is very important because if I'm not comfortable, how am I gonna develop trust? If I don't have trust, how am I gonna have that opportunity to go forward and learn? Let's add another layer to climate for discussion. How are we looking at the distribution of discipline? How are we looking at equity in a classroom, not only academically, but with regard to how I'm treated, not only as a child, but also as an adult? So those are some of the activities that we're looking to add into our strategic plan because that was information that came to us from our Listen and Learn. So the district strategic plan and goals, hit it again. There you go. You have a hyperlink and there's two hyperlinks provided to you. The first one, if you would click into that, Molly, the and I know we're working on the governance model here. I did provide this to go out to operations. We started to work a crosswalk so you can get an idea of what our performance goals would be in relation to the operational expectations for the school district. If you go back to the, slide it down. You have a key and then I start, I providing you information regarding, it's a quick review of the draft of the strategic plan. When I get the opportunity to share the Microsoft Word document, it is, each one of those hyperlinks in column A will take you back to the specific areas within the document. So I tried, it won't do it on this one specifically. If the second, thank you. That actually is the draft pending two points that we're setting up right now. One is obviously presentation board of preapproval. But the one prior to that is to set up to go back to the community within the next two weeks, to share this information, get additional input, and to report back from the five hundred and twelve individuals who gave us information during our Listen and Learn. So that we have set up for August, I'm sorry, March fifth and March tenth at two respective areas. One is here within the district. The other one would be at Bluffton High School. And this is the complete plan of right now. Again, it's in draft. Next slide. Thank you. So we look at the current status. We did Listen and Learns. We correlated the information given to us from the community. We conducted an intense internal, internal needs assessment, looking at data. We started to define targets. So that's basically where we are right now. Next slide. So we look at what our next steps would be. We're reaching back out to the community starting next week. Then we will come back to the board for approval. And the hard one is the last piece, if you look to me technically on the, on the left, is our collective work, our collective efforts at the work. Not saying that we're not doing what needs to be done. I am saying that as any other diamond, it's very nice and nice that it gets polished every now and then. So if we can click what really is a classroom, and I'm not gonna put you through the full thirteen minutes of this video, but I'm just trying to stretch your minds a little bit into thinking, um, maybe outside the box or from the inside the box out. Please go ahead. And I'm not saying we're the South Bronx. I want us to look at this from the lens of what a teacher can do. Okay? He's a special ed teacher and started what he has, a large corporation in the city of New York, being able to do basically from farm to restaurant. And has set up an organization and a foundation for children. If we can go ahead with the presentation, Ms. Molly. Thank you. I'll leave you the opportunity to view this. I pulled this one out of TED Talk, but you could take it actually out of YouTube as well. So when we're looking at ISD going forward, I want us to recognize that to me it's always about student learning first. From student learning, the idea of looking academics, student support. And then the next tier is birth through twelfth grade student learning, student learning support programs, and support services. The first area I'm gonna concentrate is support services. If you look closely at this, it actually breaks up into what is a recommendation of what we should be doing when providing support services for children. If student learning is the focal point, next layer we should be adding to our world is social emotional. I might need a little more wrapping. Maybe I need a little mental health work. But maybe I need some help with behavior. Maybe we also need to be adding community, home, and school involvement in a collaborative model. So when we look at social emotional, and this, if you look, if you pull this up electronically, each one of these are a hyperlink giving you significant research to the why. So I have, I have folders that are set up that you can go in and why do we need to look at climate? Why is it important that we look at universal screeners? Why is it important that we have a unified curriculum when it comes to social emotional development? So I'm, I'm providing you the why as backup. If we take a look at mental health, I tried to take a look, and I did work with personnel within our district and within our division in putting these slides together. But this is probably the highest recommendation. If we look at school based, school-based counseling, therapeutic programs that we should be providing for children. The adverse childhood experiences many are familiar with as ACEs. Trauma-informed care. Being able to do proper threat assessments. And be, be able to have a system in place for risk assessments, not only threat, but how can we determine if a child is maybe at risk? And I hate to say that language because to me technically it's not the childhood is at risk. I really strongly believe it's us. And I've said this, and I'll say it in this system and in prior systems, it's us. If we're not meeting the needs, something's not connected from us. If we can go forward. Another area is with regard to behavior. We're working significantly to realign our discipline codes to the state requirement. In April, we will have our first full rollout to the principals for professional development. Then we will have our next rollout to the APs. And then bring in the BMSs. So we wanna have one voice. So if I go to school at your school, a kid at your school as close as possible in consequences of what happening. But not only in consequences, but also in opportunities for students. And that's gonna be a little bit of a mind shift for us as a, as a school system. One area of growth is community. I would be very direct. We cannot do it on our own. If any of you, you know, familiar with a lot of research, we, let's recognize the reality that we are two legs of the success. And technically, we're only one. Success of a child's education stands on three elements. One is the parent, second is the school, the third actually is the community support. So we are reaching out and growing relationships with the community. Dr. Rodriguez has strongly asked that my division takes a look at all the social services that are available within Beaufort County. How do we get people together? How do we develop a point of reference? Now how do we share this information in order to use it effectively with children? So that was support services. We're now gonna take a look at student learning. I summarized the initiatives. What you see bulleted is basically what we have now. What you see in the, in the go blue is what we'd like to look for. Access for all students to extended learning beyond the traditional classroom. Building capacity, building literacy, numeracy, inquiry, and resilience of our children and our educators. Protocol for practice of instructional coaches. And that's something we've already started work with the Citadel with regard to getting our instructional coaches, our literacy coaches and math coaches, having them have a protocol of practice of how they're looking at data, unwrapping the standards. But number one was how are they building that relationship to have trust within their building? The last slide was formative data. How do we really drive instruction? Thank you. So the hyperlink here on CTE, if you look at the bullet. One of the requests that came forward from earlier board member meetings actually is the matriculation of our career technical education classes. So I've been able to provide that for you in here as well. If you're gonna, keep going forward, Molly. Now, each one of these icons, as well as the birth through twelve, gives you initiatives. So let's hit the baby first politely. So in there I have a folder set up on two, information for you on two pilots that we have set up, as well as a curriculum request for our kindergarten and pre-kindergarten literacy. And there I have I-Ready information for you that we're utilizing in the early grades right now in some pilot schools. If you can go back out, Ms. Molly. And let's go, yep, go to the middle kids, hit them up. Thank you politely. This is reading plus information for you, as well as the research and the why. Can you please bring up the slide that has the PowerPoint on it? Second row, last slide, please. And in here, I'm providing you information regarding I-Ready, reading plus, no red ink, as well as Montessori, because these are four instructional areas that we're looking to bring forward for our school district upcoming up. What we have been able to do for Montessori is collaborate, collaborate with a company locally, have the company do their training here in Beaufort in order to save on the travel expense. And we're also collaborating with Low Country Montessori, so they will be part of our contract for service. So we've been able to take from a thirteen thousand dollar per person expenditure down to approximately six thousand over a three-week period, which is a significant change. Go to teenagers. Thank you. Each one of these are giving you a hyperlink as well. I want you to, if you get the opportunity to please take a look, especially at this slide, it gives you the why. It gives you the economic structure and the business structure of some of the areas that we're looking to grow for career technical education. It's not just something that we thought of. It is, it's actually background information to get the why we need certain development in order to meet the needs of the industries that are coming here into the area. So all of these are active information for you to look at. No, you don't have to do it all at one time. I know it is a lot of homework. Go forward, please. So I brought this summer slide for you because as we talk about academics and growth, there's some areas that we have to recognize some success. And bring, pay, bring attention to the fact, again, the state has cuts back in the area of some funding. But this is information with regarding our kids from last year who were involved in the reading program over the summer and looking at their results this year. Want to send Pennell data for you? There we go. Thank you. Will you please hit that U seventy-five? Oh, the, they didn't populate. I'll fix that for you. I do apologize. If you can go back to the presentation, it did have. All right, so U seventy-five is, we're talking about when student support learning, I'm talking, we're having conversation about our higher kids. What are we doing for our higher kids and the why? It is important to meet the needs of the kids who are at the seventy-fifth percentile or above. Because if you really take a look, and I believe it was Mr. Campbell who brought it forward at an earlier meeting, if we're trying to say we're closing the achievement gap, don't tell me you're closing the achievement gap because we're dropping from the higher kids coming down. That's not what we want. We want to see the shift happening which way? Continually. Yes. The gap isn't closing because this is closing. The gap should be closing because you know what? We're at or above getting closer to the midpoint. So that was something that I wanted to make sure that we have discussion about that. We are also looking at bringing Cambridge, which is ACE courses. They are accelerated courses to some of our high schools in the area. We are working with Battery Creek regarding that. Click, please. If sped. This is research. Thank you. Regarding, really, what are we doing for special education in schools? I still have a tendency to refer to ESC. I understand here in the state of South Carolina, language utilizes sped. But this is the research of best practices of what we should be looking at. Dr. White is very familiar with this. It also has a presentation if you, when you go to the blue, to the blue link. There's a presentation there as to Dr. White and our numbers and programs that we have here in Beaufort County. One more click. ESOL. Our language learners. One of the other initiatives I'm trying to bring forward is a unified curriculum for our language learners. At this time, we do not have one. We do use WIDA access testing, which is a state requirement. But the, the recommendation that I'm putting forward is utilizing WIDA curriculum and crosswalk, okay, for our sheltered classes that we have. So that it could be a standardized curriculum that's utilized. It also helps us with a standardization of professional development to meet the needs of the classroom teachers. So in closing, if we take a look, we're trying to build on support services. We're trying to build on student learning support. The child is always centripetal. The child is always in the middle. And of course, without literacy, none of this is gonna happen. Go ahead. Any questions? Go ahead, any questions? Let's start. I know I went through it quickly, I do apologize.
Mr. Guyer?
Great presentation. And I really like the way you're looking at this as a system. But I have a HR issue.
Go for it. Yes, sir.
Our issue is we've got challenging schools. And we have high turnover. And we have our newest teachers teaching in those challenging schools. We've got to have the right teachers in the right place. And I don't see the HR piece and the management of putting our best people in our most challenging schools.
So one of the layers that I've started looking at, and I didn't have this in this presentation, it's going to come out at academic committee, is taking a look at the performance of students in SC Ready, math, SC Ready ELA, as well as EOC Algebra, the required classes for graduation. Let's put it at the high school level. And then taking a look at the highest level, and it's an average, I have to say that, the highest level of academics of the teachers. So what is your percentage of teachers with master's degree, percentage of teachers, you know, doctoral degree. But then looking at the amount of years of service. So it's a table that I'm putting together that we could look at to say, is there really a relationship? And the one question that I have to share, and I understand where you're driving the bus to, because if my youngest teachers, my newest teachers, who normally have the highest energy, are we putting the resources there to help keep you there? And I think that's something we're working closely with HR. But when you look at this table, it's hard to be conclusive to say that my years of service are having a positive or negative impact at this time.
Additionally, I've asked our HR team, getting to put a plan together to incentivize our more experienced educators with performance and track records towards our schools.
You know, what I see is I see a young teacher coming in, just graduated from Ohio State University, and he's come to Broad River Elementary. And that person doesn't have a clue about how you deal with students in poverty, single parent, all the issues that we have. And we're setting that person up without a whole lot of training. I mean, you can, I went and sat in on your training for the new people that came in this fall. And that was good. But that's not the same as being in that classroom. And so why aren't we sending those new teachers to Cousteau Elementary? Or to some of our higher performance, or not higher performing, but less challenging?
More years of experienced personnel going to schools that may have, because every school has challenge. Whenever you have children, there's something.
But the challenges of the high poverty, the numbers of ESOL students and so on, that's what I want to see.
And in addition, part of the conversation that I have begun in tying in also our community, different agencies and organizations that are there, part of what emerged from an initial brainstorming conversation yesterday was about training regarding educating children in poverty. We started our cultural competence training already with our principals, and that's going to filter through our system and needs to be an ongoing component. Because those are critical pieces in closing achievement gaps. But you know, there hasn't been a lot, I don't think there's been any training in those areas, you know, and, or if it has been, not sufficient. So those are things we have to bring in as part of the human capital component and also the development of our organization, our human capital.
So if we take, if we remember, one of the first areas I probably had most of the slides when it comes to ISD initiatives was with regard to support services. We have to be conscious, I believe, that that's an area that I think we have a gap. And as Dr. Rodriguez brought forward, that being able to pull together outside agency and giving support, not only to the students, but also outside agencies coming in to increase the capacity of the teachers. We've had that conversation starting with USCB yesterday. They are our closest neighbor to make it happen. And it was a very positive conversation at the table. But I think us as a system, we have to look very closely, how are we providing these support services? Because if we're giving what's needed from a community perspective and a school's perspective, classroom learning will be easier. That's the other element, yes.
Mr. Mel Campbell? Oh, I thought you did. Okay, I'm sorry, because I have a queue here.
Yeah, number uno.
Vete. Mr. Campbell, I'm impressed.
On that list of schools reading, I noticed one particular school had the whole cluster down the bottom tier of poverty.
On the poverty index slide, sir?
Yes.
That would be?
Eighty-something for the, for the 94% for the elementary. I'm trying to get up, I've got a bunch of questions just about this. And 89% for the middle school. And because the high school kids are a whole lot wealthier, they're up there at 77%. Now?
Slide 18?
Slide, uh?
18.
Anyway, that jumps out at me for a number of reasons. One, that being the poverty index for those schools, their numbers overall should be significantly lower than any other group you've got, any other cluster you've got. And is that relative? I mean, is it reflected? And if not, why not in terms of Mr. Guyer's question? And, all right, that's just one of the many questions there. Is there a template for those children who are obviously getting wealthier in the high school? I don't know if they got jobs or what. Or is it?
If we add the zip code on this, it would give a different perspective, and I didn't want to do that.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I just want to know, if the elementary kids are poorer, is that a newer set of demographics? Is that, there's a newer families that are just absolutely poor than the families who have been there for generations? That's what I want to know.
If, Robert, thank you. Yes.
I believe what you're referring to is the high school, that high school in that cluster has the highest percentage of transfers into that high school. So when you look at the poverty index of that high school, it also has a lot of people coming from outside. So I wouldn't say that the students in that area are changing. It's just you're having an influx of other kids.
Numbers are being, numbers are diluted.
So what happens, a lot of times, parents start in one school. And it's always the middle school fear as well, Mr. Campbell. And a lot of parents go private. And then we turn back into the high school. So you do get a flux that comes back in, the numbers jump back up again.
Fall off question.
Yes, sir.
Does that poverty rate also reflect what we're getting as results in terms of the portions, the partials? Elementary kids, for example, are they, you know, underachieving to the level that that rate shows? And as the middle school kids, you know, reflective? And the high school kids, in terms of, you know, where they are and who we've brought in versus other schools with them kind of list?
So what you're?
I'm driving at the idea that are we overemphasizing poverty? Because there are, you know, in America, there are a lot of districts that are very poor districts that are doing a lot better than some people think they ought to be.
I understand when you're driving the bus. And if I could bring forward, no, 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 no. Please, let me bring forward the why. I think it's important that we recognize that we have a poverty index here in our county. I think it's important to ask ourselves, what are we doing to provide services to the children? And when we take that analysis and say that there are other districts that are performing higher, or if I could share with you the school that I came from, I was, when I left the campus, I was 89% free and reduced lunch. My graduation rate was 93.2%. Okay, how did you do that? If you go back to student support services, working with the community, the elements that provide success, if you go back to the work of James Comer, right, and think about that three-leg approach? Family, community, and school. We have to do it together. Schools cannot, the system cannot do it on its own. We should not have that type of mentee that we can. Those days have come and left. So it's not the poverty to say, look at these poor kids because I don't believe in I bendito.
Expectations.
It's expectations.
High expectations.
And reaching out and bringing in to grow.
And high expectations with supports necessary to push along.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Mr. Dowling?
Just a quick comment before my question. I think you've brought the presentation of the problem and the understanding of the problem and proposed solution to the problem as to a whole new level for this school district, based on my experience.
I appreciate that, sir.
Is it fair to say, though, that what I heard you say was that there is, that the correlation between a teacher's years in the classroom and their success is not as direct or linked as we might infer by looking at certain data points?
I will put it to you this way, Mr. Dowling. A lot of bad creates bad. A lot of good creates good. A lot of great creates great. So one of the things that we provided our principals earlier this year when they received their MAP data was to take a closer look at their evaluation and scores on the 4.0 rubric in the classroom to help our principals take a look that if this is what I'm getting back. And we added also columns on that for the principals regarding SC Ready performance for them to take a look at the effectiveness of observation, the effectiveness of instruction, and the results that we're getting. I think that was something that needed to be looked at by us as educators.
So just two quick points. One, we've talked about this piece before, is really a lack of progress monitoring system in our school district to measure the impact of instruction and along the way, along the way, not August and then December. We've lost four or five months. But along the way, so that our teachers have information to adjust and shift instruction as needed, right? To provide an instructional cycle that allows for reviewing whether our kids mastered it or didn't master it, and then making an instructional decision. The teacher can make an instructional decision of whether I need, you know, reteaching or whether I need enrichment while I work with a small group that didn't get it so that we can move the academic progress along for all kids. That's one piece. Another critical piece, I believe, goes closely to what Mr. Guyer was talking about earlier. And it has to do with the development of our human capital. Paul Benberg Santoya has put together really several frameworks. One, with respect to leadership, and how leadership moves into classrooms and observes classrooms and provides feedback for teachers regarding instruction. That's why I talk a lot about building instructional capacity of our administrators and our school-based leaders, right? Because that feedback is how we all get better. Every one of us gets better. It's not a punishment, it's not a negative thing. It's feedback for improvement. And that's a culture shift, right? That's really important. Paul Benberg Santoya and his work has frameworks around building instructional leadership capacity, but zeroing in on feedback as a critical piece in improving instruction and improving academic performance for kids. He ties it into progress monitoring components. And I think he also recognizes that in today's educational world, right, we don't have five years, 10 years to make a difference, right? So he's also shifted into, he's got a framework that's called Get Better Faster, right? And it's essentially designed in a feedback loop to zeroing in on what are some of the key levers that he has studied and researched over time that has identified, that he has identified as key levers in moving student achievement and building capacity within staff, teachers, and administrators to hone in on those, right? And build in a feedback loop to continually improve.
So therefore, if I heard you right, it can be dangerous to make an assumption that an eight-year veteran teacher is automatically going to be more effective than someone in their first or second year. Is that correct?
Yeah, I would, you know, I would say that's possible, right? But I think, you know, I would prefer to look at what existing information do we have about moving student achievement? And then make a decision based on what existing information we have based on moving student achievement.
Oh, I agree with you. I'm questioning whether we can just look at how many years a person's been teaching and assume that the kids are not going to do well based on how long?
In my 26 years, okay? Almost 27 years in education, okay? The one thing I have definitely learned is that to put your finger on one thing and say that this one thing
Makes it hard.
is the only difference maker right here, is not necessarily the way to do it, okay? That there are many variables that you have to look at and you have to plug and push away at to improve the overall environment scenario of the learning environment in which we are in to move student achievement, right? So it's, I don't want to, I feel like I cheat it and I don't do it justice if I simplify it to one thing.
Thank you, that answers my question.
So I have a question, and then? So based on this information, the high-poverty schools and what Mr. Guyer said and the state's recommendation of a 16 to 1, we've talked about differentiated staffing before. So that would be a question, particularly at these schools that are high poverty, whether that would be something we would look through, look at. And then my other question is just, do we do walkthroughs here? Do the administrators do walkthroughs on a?
May I?
Yes.
So number one, the research shows 15 to 1, anything above that, it's not going to have the most positive impact. And we recognize that for underachieving students, right? Those kids, and we're talking the lowest, and I like to say the lowest 30%, don't look at the 25%. Your second question regarding walkthroughs, the answer to that is yes. Beaufort County actually was able to get the state of South Carolina to add walkthroughs onto their data collection system as well. That is brand new to the state because the question was, where do we collect that information? If we all have 11 schools in here, what I found was we had 11 different data collection points for that. data collection points for that. We now have one back in the state system. And that was because of Anita Parker's work in the building, bringing that request up to the state for us.
So just, you know, I spoke a little bit about feedback, right?
You gotta get in the queue. In the future, you gotta get in the queue.
Oh, you.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
No, you go. You go. You sure? All right. Okay. So with respect to, you know, the feedback piece I was talking about, it's based on walkthroughs and it's based on observations in rooms, right? One of the things that you know that I do is I walk classrooms, you know, quite a bit. One of the things I leave behind when I leave a room, most of the time, sticky note with a little note that I'll leave behind, and it's feedback, right? It's feedback and it's specific feedback, right? And what I have found, when I do that, right, that I get an email from teachers right away just thanking me for that feedback, right? And appreciating that observation. Our administrative teams, our school-based leaders do, they do walkthroughs. Critical piece.
Okay, Mr. Smith.
Just to go to the point, part of what he brought up, who else, Mr. Campbell, but through this, this is the first off. Let me thank you for preparing this presentation for us. It's a very good, very good presentation. One thing that concerns me, I'm not about any other board member, but there were certain slides in there, when you had, talking about the community and different things and behavior.
Mm-hmm.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, I think that culture plays a big piece and a big component in this. And I think that it would be a disservice to our kids and to our district if we overlook that because, like, sometimes the way how I may talk or may verbalize myself, some people may say, oh, he's kind of aggressive or he's different. But if you don't know me, then you prejudge me how I express myself, maybe different versus in Mr. Guyer. Mr. Guyer may just talk softly or he may make a statement and he's done. But I may be a little, some people may call him a little animated, some people may say he's a little expressive or overexpressive. And my point here is, in order to understand some people, you have to understand their culture, understand how they live. And then not only, one, does that help you better teach them, two, that helps you better understand who they are and how you get them to understand what you're teaching them. And in this district, often times, even I've visited some classrooms, I never forget the time when I visited a classroom and I'd teach the little boy, you were being loud, but he was like, who, who, who? I know the answer. And when she, and she, I mean, before she called him, she called on two other kids. And when she finally called him, he was the one with the right answer. And she was like, you're too loud, but that may be how he's raised. And if you don't understand him, then you won't know him. You think he's being, he's being too loud. So that's why that gullible piece is a very, understanding the kids of different communities is a very, it's a different piece, a piece that must be involved, to make a long story short.
Mr. Smith, I agree with you a thousand percent, a thousand percent.
Right.
Right? That is, that is why we are engaging in cultural competence training. I've started it with our administrators, right? It has to be ongoing. It can't be a one-shot thing, right? Because this is, this is ongoing. I mean, believe me, I've been through it, you know, every year over a fifteen-year period, right? We would do it all the time, right? Because you need to, right? Not just administrators. It needs to filter down into our staff and our teachers as well, you know, bus drivers, anybody who really engages our students, right? It's a really important piece. So I don't disagree at all. I agree with you a thousand percent.
And it is one of the items that came out from our Listen and Learn's. It was one of the priority actions to take. So it's actually identified in our strategic plan as for the developing professional learning for diversity.
Right.
And resilience. It is one of the priorities for us.
Okay. I mean, and I just, when you were, when you were on behavior, to me, that's just, and I know that you know because you and I have talked about that.
Yes, sir.
On this conversation about behaviors and different things. So I know that you knew that, but I just wanted to put that out there just because of the fact that that's very, that's something very, very important that sticks out to me. Also, it was something else I made to McNichon. When it comes back to me.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else that hasn't spoken yet? Ms. Orshak?
Okay, a few things. First, would you explain to everyone the benefits of aligning the Beaufort County Student Code of Conduct with South Carolina's Student Code of Conduct? What are the main benefits in doing that?
One is a requirement by law. That is actually, the law has required for us to be aligned. I have to predicate that. And we're just catching up to that. We've gone from a level one, two, three, four, five. The law is requiring three steps, one, two, three. And the consistency, I think, is maybe the question, Ms. Orshak, of practice. That is a benefit. Said that a child is, if something happens at school A, we should have a similar consequence at school B. That would be our ultimate goal, ultimate goal. And that's basically a single-school culture mindset, but we need to call it a single-system mindset.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Also, the whole classroom without walls movement, it's a movement, okay? And I'm looking forward to watching that TED Talk. In some places, it's embraced. Other places, it's taboo to have a, you know, a full class, not a four walls and a roof on top. So are we moving? Are we encouraging that? I mean, there's so much to that.
I think that's something for Mr. Robert, his ears have perked up, but just to share that presentation with Mr. Ritz is basically, it is a pure essence of problem-based learning and taking the classroom outside of the traditional setting. But I could ask if Ms. Audi wants to speak a little bit in some of the areas we're moving to, what are cloutions? No, I got the look. We're still working on that, Ms. Orshak.
Microphone.
So there is a movement in that direction. We can talk in more detail about that. One thing is creating spaces for them to have interaction or project-based learning in open area spaces. What, I will say this, what if, you know, teachers, a lot of times, they do, even if they're open, they'll create boundaries and boxes. So there are different ways to go about that and we'll work with them to. There are, you know, a lot of initiatives to be creative around creating those spaces where classrooms still exist, but in other parts of the facility and the building, those open spaces exist and are designed to encourage that kind of, that kind of thing. So, for example, in Palm Beach, we had a school where when you walk in, you were in an atrium, and that atrium had a stage. And on that stage, kids who were in the music group or were, you know, would sometimes have their class out there, right? So they were, and they had different purposes. So they're, you know, it's a matter of being intentional about the use of that space if that space has been created.
RIB Elementary comes to mind in their atrium and they often have classes in that open area. Thank you for that.
Can I add one more thing?
Sure.
Just to add, so that is the concept actually in our media center upgrades. If you've looked at that, the concept we say over and over again is a room within a room. So we opened up our media centers so that they're more spacious, but then there's different sections in there. There's a section for a classroom, there's a section for reading. That's kind of along those things. So we're already going down that path in some areas.
Gotcha. One more, if I may.
Sure.
I'll make it brief.
Then Ms. Mel Campbell.
Okay, yeah, he's got ninety-six more. He got through four. Summer reading, every year we tout the successes of our summer reading program, and I don't doubt it. And every year, as far back as we've had the programs, I ask the same question. Why don't we continue that formula for that population of students through the school year? And they smile politely and say, you know, pat me on the head, and I never got an answer. I suspect you'll give me an answer.
Well, I could carve it two ways. One carving could be, how do we operate as a school system regarding the amount of days of instruction and where do those days lay on a calendar, right? So that's something at one point I think we need to have a discussion through our academic committee to take a look that instead of us having a traditional model, do we look at designing something that lends for extended learning through the summer? So that's something to be creative and let's have a conversation about that. The other part is, do we actually do instruction that is focused reading, unified reading and development? And we get, do we do the human capital part of developing those reading teachers? And reading teachers are not just for decoding, but actually to help me learn how to read and the love of reading as well. And that is being able to build that capacity part of it. And that also speaks to what, you know, Robert brought forward about the open classroom or one of your questions. You can't have the open classroom without developing that teacher skill as well, right? That the PD component has to be parallel to what we're doing. And so it's kind of critical. So yes, I think the reading needs to continue all year long. It's not just here and now. It should be something that we should be able to design, but everything costs one thing, money.
It comes down to, I know it comes down to funding.
It really does come down. It comes down to what do we want to invest in?
It goes to Mr. Guyer's issue of the smaller class size, which is what we have during the summer reading program.
Yes.
It has to do with those children all together and with a very specific program all day long from start to finish. And it's, every year, it seems it's not doable, is the answer we get.
It's what we want to invest in. If you only, the pie is only so large, how many times, how are we going to slice it? And that's something we have to work and identify in alignment with the priorities that the board has put forward. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mel Campbell.
I'll first talk about Dr. Rodriguez's idea of the point, data points. And that's important because you do have to have data points. But I suggest that's one of the things that we need to start with in terms of data points is a thorough history of the education of the state of South Carolina by the people who are supposed to be educating in the state now. Because I'm sure that most of our administrators don't know principals, high school principals.
Mm-hmm.
And therefore, they themselves can have a better grip of the diversity training that's going to come forward. You don't have to reinvent the wheel. There's a, there's a long history of what has occurred, particularly along this coastal area, Beaufort County, in education. And I'm sure you've heard of the, you know, people highlight that. I'm the first generation graduate from high school and I'm the first generation. You'd be surprised at the statistics here with our little numbers of people who have never graduated from college and families or even high school. Those are some points. And by studying the history of the area, just familiarizing yourself with the history, you begin to understand why you're dealing with who you're dealing with. And I can't even, you know, give you the depth of the complexity there. It's not just your usual diversity training in Boston, Massachusetts, or Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. This is a little bit much more complicated and convoluted than you would think it is in terms of diversity.
If I may, yesterday I had the opportunity of meeting Mr. Gardner, who was born and raised in St. Helena area. And he brought to my attention regarding research and work that was done in the sixties at the end of the Johnson administration and the medical health. It was significant when the conversation drove to that we had children here in St. Helena area having the same level of disease of a third-world nation here in the United States, right? So, and we forget about the public health part, not only, and Mr. Campbell, I sometimes, when I know you were a math teacher, but your essence of going right to the root of looking at history in order to understand the footprint so we can have a greater appreciation. It actually is a very, very good approach to bring, to heighten individuals' awareness and knowledge. But you're knocking on the door of something that I'm learning more about myself as well.
Thank you. I appreciate you. And, you know, that's the reason we hired you because we thought that you were going to be able to think out of the box. And speaking of thinking out of the box from a board perspective and in terms of conversation earlier about the budget, are we willing to think out of the box in terms of that budget presentation when it comes? Because we can ask people to do things that they're limited in terms of that box that the budget keeps us in. You know, a certain amount of dollars is going to be spent for instructional. Well, we need more instructional in a different ratio. How do we make those adjustments? You know, and vote for it without, you know, fair public disdain? You know, bottom line is we have to examine where we are, how we want to proceed.
Mr. Guyer?
Mel, you hit what I was just about to mention. We have now acknowledged in this district that we have an achievement gap. And that wasn't that long ago that we owned up to that fact. Now you are working on a strategy to reduce and eliminate that achievement gap. And it's not done yet. We've got some work to do.
Yes, we do, sir.
But once that's done, then we got to market that solution to the public and make sure they understand that we know there's a problem, we have a solution, and they buy into the solution. Then when they buy into the solution, then they're going to tell their elected officials, this is what it's going to cost. And we have to, we have to be able to say what it's going to cost. And then we got to sell it. Because we have to get the dollars, and I know it's got to be auditable.
Yes, sir.
I mean, we can't be throwing money at the problem. We've got to make sure it's focused on the end result, and that's reduce and eliminate the achievement gap. If we do all those things, we're on the road to accomplishing this mission. But that's a, that's a bunch of steps that we've got to go through to do that. And I know we have a team here, we can do it.
There's a lot of talent in this building, sir, a lot. And I'll turn this over to Dr. Rodriguez.
I think what I would just say, both of you are correct, right? And Mel, you know Mary for a long time? She's so far out of the box, she doesn't even see the box.
They don't.
I won't, I'll behave.
Thank you, sir. And I'll share with that, well, another time, sir. But I have to add that the talent is not just here in this building. I have walked on campuses and I will share with you what I see, principals and teachers and dedication. We just need to put some systems in place. We have to focus on the curricular, the practice of the curriculum, and provide our teachers with some more tools. One of the very important, when Dr. Rodriguez is bringing forward about coaching and walkthroughs, I think we need to build the capacity of our, some of our leaders to do that reflective questioning, right? So when you do a walkthrough, are we doing the right type of questioning to build the capacity? Don't shut me down as an educator. Because that's the other fragile part, because teachers want to please their boss. So that's another element we have to put in place. There's some layers of this that we need to work together. But what's critical is the conversation that we're having right now because we've recognized, we're looking in the mirror, and we're saying that collectively we want a level of improvement.
Hey, Mr. Smith?
Also, one of my concerns is that we've been having some programs that I need now, I think that we need to start looking at as well as some positions when it comes down to the budget and really getting down to the fine tune of, and this may not be a hot topic, but, you know, when I look at the education components and to ask what Mr. Guyer said about some of these best teachers, do we have some of our best teachers in positions that are not in classes? You know, would they, I think it's time that we have to ask ourselves, would they serve best as coaches or as teachers in classes? I mean, and this is a tough, I'm sure some people are going to contact me and call me, but by all means, blow me up, call my phone. But when it comes down to it, I need results. I don't care if you're my mother. If you're in this position. If you're in this position and I'm not seeing results, then we have to do something different. Because to keep doing the same thing over and over and over, it's insanity. So I mean, I think that it's also time that we take a deep dive in some of those, some of those, some of those things that I just mentioned. I mean, because it kind of disturbed me when, you know, when someone tells, I come up to them and say, oh yeah, she's just coach, she's this, or this person is this, and they're the best in the building. Best in the building, but I want to see you be teaching the best kids, or you have the best class in the building. Because we have to get the best bang for our buck. And we're asking for more money in different places. I think we might have to trim that. And if you want to be administered by all means, listen. On the other hand, I want this to make you, if you deserve it, to give it, to give you the opportunity. But I think that on some things, we have to start looking and seeing if the class will better serve. Some people will serve our students better in some positions. Even some of these programs that we're using. You know, I mean, I love, I love that kids are coming for us and singing and do those things. But the question comes at the end of the day, is that kid learning or is that just a good time? You can have a good time home playing the game on your own time. But on educational time, I need to make sure that you're learning so that you can read. Because when I went to McDonald's, I didn't even talk to nobody in the market. Just go to the machine and put my order in and turn around, and a few minutes it comes out. So along with technology moving and other things, I want to make sure that our students in Beaufort County are moving and they're exhaling. And the achievement gap is going to get old. So those are, I said a lot, but that is where I'm at when it comes to the term, I mean, when it comes to the term of learning and the achievement gap and the kids moving forward. Because we've been talking about this thing forever. I mean, Mr. Guyer brought a good point. We have to be willing to pull dollars from different places and say, look, yeah, we believe in achievement gap. All right, let's put a million dollars into it. I'm from Missouri. Don't talk me into that. Show me. Don't tell me you're crying. Show me.
Show me state.
That's right.
Mr. Smith, the lens looking at our coaches. Actually, the better the capacity of our coaches are working with teachers, the greater opportunity of sustainability with regard to school reform. But there has to be a commitment, not only from us as a district, but at the school site, with the development and utilization of our instructional coaches for that purpose. So that is something that we're looking at and that is something that we're trying to build that capacity. I wanted to share that with you. And with regard to learning, of greatest respect, because I don't see the box, learning is represented in so many different ways.
Right.
Not only from a test score, but actually from a performance, actually from being able to take information and develop. Some of the most educated people I know never went to college. And I've learned so much from them. And I really believe that's another thing that, you know, a lens that we need to put on and open that opportunity for children, but mostly teachers, to recognize that teaching is not only to a test, but it is being able to develop that thirst, that hope and creativity back in a child so that they become self-motivated learners to go forward. Not a compliance model, but a creativity model. So that was my little spiel on that and with greatest respect, sir.
And I agree with everything you're saying, but
And we have to be able to read.
Right, right, right. There you go. Because I see where the world is shifting. When these kids leave Beaufort County School District, I want them to be able to complete globally. Some people say that nationally, some people like, well, they're both the same. No, to me, listen, I want to, every box I want, I want to market accidentally.
Well, if I could give you, I'll close with this. If I could be able to turn some things around, I would try to create an art school here in our county. I would turn around and create a cyber logistics program here in our county. That could have a feeder pattern north and south of the board. I would increase an environmental program here in the county as well. And these are areas that I believe we could grow and develop significantly with the right alignment. I also think that by creating some of these programs, not that we're going to compete, but if we can work collaboratively with some of the private schools in the county, that they could maybe, you know, let's be out of the box, maybe. Maybe they pay a fee, a tuition to come have their kids take certain classes with us. Let's be out of the box of what we're looking at. Let's not keep doing things the same way. But let's be a little more pointed in what we're creating for our children and aligning, right? But also, again, building that capacity with the educators. We can't do it without that other element, right? We have to work together. It's not even a dichotomy anymore, you know? It's a multi-layered approach, what we need to do for school reform.
And what you said was, I'm going to wrap it up right now. I'm going to wrap it up. Give me just a second. And what you said, could you possibly, if you don't mind, would you email and maybe cc those three programs that you said? Because I've got so much going through my mind, I didn't write them down. But those were three important things. Actually, I just had a student who asked me, when are we going to get a, what's the name of the program that you said?
Art.
Arts program. Because she said that the school in Greenville looked at her, but says she wasn't good enough. And she's not homeschooling. I told her I want her to become a Beaufort County student. But I know other people have other questions, but thank you for that.
Yeah, I'll work through Dr. Rodriguez. Is she a little pro for it?
That's no problem.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, I have two people in the queue, Ms. Orshak and Mr. Dowling.
Well, I'd rather before me, if there's anyone else that has any comments first.
Okay, Mr. Dowling?
I'd like to continue something that Mr. Guyer was speaking about in terms of articulating to the community what we're trying to do. To my way of thinking, we have three budgets. We don't have a budget. We have three budgets. We have an instructional budget, we have an operational budget, and we have an administrative budget. What I would suggest is that we take them one, two, and three and vet the instructional budget on its own, present it, approve it, market it to the community, and then have the operational budget go through the same process. What do we do now? We put up a pie chart. This is no reflection on you, Mrs. Crosby, because it was done long before your time. They put up a pie chart that says 71% of the budget is instruction, and that's as far as it goes. What does that mean to the average person? All they're thinking of is $245 million, all right? If we take that 71% and say this is, in rough figures, $170 million, and here's what it buys us, and have a presentation like the one we just saw, then people are going to perhaps think that we have, I say, heads screwed on straight. And then we can say, does that support that budget? Because that budget is our priority. We have an operations budget. And here's what we need operationally to make that instructional budget happen. And then thirdly, what do we need administratively to make that, the first two happen? I really think that that type of approach would go over better with the community. And B, it would focus us more on the particulars of each subject. Because each portion of it gets blurred. We get an excellent presentation about how much money's coming in and how much money's going to go out. But we lose sight of how does that relate to the instructional budget or the operational budget? Let's take it one, two, three. Then we can, when we've got that straightened out, then we can add it up and go to the communities and say, oh, by the way, here's what it costs. And if it costs too much, we know where to go for it instead of reinventing them. That's just my thinking on it.
Did anyone else that hasn't had a chance to speak yet like to comment? And Ms. Orshak?
All right, I rerouted after listening to Mr. Dowling's comments. How do we make that happen as a board? It seems very reasonable to me. It places a clear priority on our instructional budget. And I think you would have no problem selling the instructional budget to your constituencies. I think where they trip up is when the number gets too large and they have perceived areas of waste.
I imagine making a motion up there, huh? I imagine you can make a motion on it. I don't see why not.
I don't, it's not, it's not. Yeah.
That's fine. I don't know what to do with it at this juncture, so I'm looking for feedback from the board.
It doesn't seem like it's on topic.
It's a budget-related thing. It could happen tomorrow when we have further discussion on the budget. It's more budget-focused than it is perhaps ISD.
That would be my only, my only thought.
And it'll give us a chance to form a motion, a thoughtful motion.
So if I could just share in closing, Mr. Campbell, I am going to revisit the slide on 18. I'll be able to, I'll try to get it together for academic committee with regard to the poverty index and the relationship. And I'm only, it's only going to be a mean score regarding SC Ready for math, ELA, and maybe some EOCs. So I'll try to present their relationship for you as well, sir. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I was just going to say, also, I guess, I apologize. So we can't look for that email from you then, right? Okay, thank you. I thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, sir.
At this time, we will recess until tomorrow morning. Thank you, everyone, for your work today.
Ms. Anderson, how long have you had?
Okay. Okay.